Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll, please, to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes will be absent today. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Potem Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good evening, everyone. We have the high honor of having Girl Scout Troop 1290 here this afternoon to please lead us in both the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance. We welcome you. Who is going to? You're all welcome to come on up. Come to the speaker here. And here you go. We'll all stand. Everyone, please rise.
To the original people of this land, the Nisi-Nan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Hutwin-Winton peoples, and the people of the Wilton Ranchera, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you, and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, guys. Yeah, I was gonna say, you did a really great job pronouncing the names, because council member was just saying not everyone gets that right. Do we have a daughter of a council member here? This, uh, would you like to approach the benches, they say?
So Asha, ask permission, may I approach?
May I?
Yes.
Come on up, Asha.
Come on, come on up. You can, yes, go underneath, that's great. Look at this. Oh, well, you are so sweet. Thank you so much. All right, I put eye on the Girl Scouts.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for indulging, and I'd also like to thank Girl Scout Troops 1290 for being here, specifically Ella Campbell, who said the land acknowledgement and let us in the pledge, who is the daughter of Yatin Campbell, who's one of our appointees for the Women and Girls Commission for Sacramento County. But if the council would so indulge, because our troop is from kindergarten through to high school, so we are a multi-level troop, and this is who could make it here tonight, but we have over 30 members if they could come down front and take a picture with all of us.
Of course, come on. It'd be our honor, so you guys come on up, all right?
If you'll wait.
Well, I'm gonna, by the way, I'm gonna share the cookies with my colleagues, if that's okay.
That's the beloved raspberries.
Okay. Yeah, the beloved raspberries.
I haven't gotten the veggie there.
That's a new one.
I know, that's a new thing.
I'm the one with the coconut.
Ooh.
Asha. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
What a great way to start our meeting. Thank you, guys, so much. Does the city attorney have any report on a close session?
Mayor, there's nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Attorney. We have a special presentation from Councilmember Jennings, and I'm gonna take a point of privilege after that to make an announcement before the end of the meeting, if that's okay. Councilmember Jennings, it's yours, Black History Month.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to provide a resolution for Black History Month, and I am honored to present this resolution commemorating Black History Month of 2023. Black Sacramentoans has made great contributions to our great city, and we should all be proud of the service that they've been able to provide, and this document speaks to that. In case you didn't know, we've had some great names of Black Sacramentoans, Nat Colley, LeVar Burton, Lauren Hammond, I've got some more, Sam and Bonnie Pennell, who served on this council, Lauren Hammond, who also served on this council, Mayor Kevin Johnson, who served on this council, and Gregory Porter, who's an incredible jazz baritone and composer. He went to CM Gady Middle School and started right here in Sacramento, and there are many, many more. I started not to do this because I'm gonna miss some of the great ones, but I did want it to acknowledge them. So I'm gonna read the resolution out loud, and so that everyone can hear it, and if anyone would like a copy of this resolution, you can contact my office, and I'll make sure to get you a copy of the resolution. Whereas the city of Sacramento recognizes the importance of acknowledging and celebrating the rich history and contribution of African-Americans to the cultural fabric of our city and our nation, whereas Black History Month serves as an opportunity to reflect upon the ongoing struggle for civil rights, equality, and justice, and provide an opportunity to educate ourselves and reflect upon the significant achievements and sacrifices made by African-Americans throughout the history of both Sacramento and the United States. Whereas the city of Sacramento is proud to join with communities and community-based organizations across the country in celebrating Black History Month and acknowledging the important role that African-Americans have played in shaping our city and our nation. Whereas through the entire month of February, and I'm gonna stop there for a second, because in 1926, it was called Negro History Week, and then in 1976, it changed to Black History Month. So just a little historical fact for you. Whereas we must all, we must not allow ourselves to grow complacent, believing that the long struggle for equality to be over, and encourage all residents of Sacramento to celebrate the contributions and achievements of African-Americans throughout the year, and to continue working towards a more just and equitable society for all. Therefore, let it be resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Sacramento that we do hereby recognize the month of February as Black History Month in the city of Sacramento, and call upon all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions of African-Americans to Sacramento, the state of California, and the entire United States. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you so much, councilmember, for bringing that forward. I mean, so much to say, of course, but let's just say that the fight for justice, reparations, and equality for all people, especially African-Americans, given this country's history of slavery, other discrimination, that the work never ends, and the resolution is a reminder of that. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. Mayor Potem, did you have a comment? Of course.
Thanks, Mayor. I just also wanted to add, you know, as we come together this month to recognize the contribution that Black Americans have made to our collective history and really honor our Black community this month, but not just this month, but 365 all year round, I also wanna take this moment to center Councilmember Jennings. You know, he didn't mention himself in that list of incredible African-Americans that have made a contribution to the city of Sacramento, and I wanna center him for his bravery, courage, and leadership, and everything that he's done, not just for the Black and African-American community, but for all communities. And so, Councilmember Jennings, it is Black History Month, and I want you to know that you are also honored and recognized, and that we know that your voice is so critical in terms of democracy in this process, and so I wanna take this moment to say thank you for your leadership. And Mayor, you're absolutely right, you know, we still have a long way to go since the Civil Rights Movement, and there's still so much more work ahead that we need to do collectively as a city to ensure that we do create a world where all of our families can thrive, and just really, you know, happy that, you know, Councilmember Jennings brought this resolution forward, but let's not celebrate Black History Month just in February, but let's make sure that that is truly our center, 365 all the time, and we make Black families a priority in everything that we do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, terrific. So again, ask for a point of privilege. I was gonna wait till the end, but I just wanna make sure people are watching, that they're making an important announcement here. As you know, the people of Syria and Turkey suffered an incredible natural disaster, an earthquake, that's killed tens of thousands and has displaced so many people more. And as usual, our community, our diverse community, is stepping up to try to provide relief. And so tomorrow evening, the 22nd of February, at the Memorial Auditorium, starting at 7:30, the Sacramento Interfaith Community is hosting a benefit concert for earthquake victims in both Turkey and Syria. A renowned ensemble, the Alfardaus, the Alfardaus, will be performing a special, one-night-only show. The ensemble is a blend of beautiful musical traditions from Western, classical, Turkish, Arabic, Celtic, Andalusian, Flamenco, and Celtic. Tickets are on sale now through Ticketmaster, and will also be on sale at the Memorial Auditorium tomorrow. Tickets are only $28, and all proceeds will go to the Zakat Foundation of America that is providing emergency relief through temporary shelter, food, medical supplies, and hygiene kits in areas affected by the earthquake. I wanna extend a special thank you to Bassem Alkara and his team at CARE, my synagogue I'm always proud of, Temple Benay Israel, the City of Sacramento, Mr. City Manager, you and your team, and my staff, including Chinwan Zack, who worked really hard to help secure the space for the concert. You know, we're gonna provide some relief on the fees and all that, because it's absolutely the right thing to do. I cannot be there tomorrow night, unfortunately, I feel really bad about it, but I know that Councilmember Laloe will be there, and maybe some other colleagues as well, but our heart goes out to the people, and Sacramento always steps up, will do our part. Thank you. Okay. Mayor Potem on that one? Did you? Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't. There you go. Okay. Let's now take on the consent calendar. Are there any items that members would like to discuss separately or to vote on separately? Nope? All right, let's take a motion.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Moved. Moved and seconded, thank you. Is there public testimony?
There is. Mayor, I have one speaker to make public comment on item five, David Guero. And then can I remind members of the public, if you'd like to speak on it, we're on the consent calendar now. If you're in council chambers, start a speaker slip. If you're in Zoom, raise your hand for the consent calendar, and after the first speaker, we will no longer accept speaker slips, and the raised hand feature will be disabled in Zoom. David, please proceed.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members, the opportunity to talk about Northgate Mobility Plan. That's item number five. The plan is about the future of Northgate Boulevard, what the community that lives there, the community that shops there, the community that works there, want for our future. We want a safe community where we can walk the streets, ride our bikes, and cross the street at the same risk level as the best neighborhoods in the city. The future's gonna come, however the future we want, we can help that by decisions made here today. If we sit back and do nothing, Northgate will become a bypass or I-5. Every evening, downtown traffic will come down 16th and turn onto Northgate Boulevard and reach the hundreds of homes planned for north of 80. The traffic cycle will repeat itself the next morning and continue on. If we do nothing now, we're inviting the congestion, the pollution, the stress that comes with living near, next to a high-volume vehicle corridor. The Northgate Mobility Plan is an attempt to provide a vision for Northgate Boulevard, for us to lead healthier lives by reducing pollution and encouraging movement without our vehicles. The Northgate Mobility Plan is a larger vision to transform our area with access to walkable sidewalks, safe pedestrian crossings, and one day, a clean and safe access to the beautiful American River Trail. There are many steps to take along this possible future. Today is about a plan, the next step will be funding. We will look to our elected officials to think about the communities that border Northgate Boulevard, and thank you, and hopefully we get a vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four members with their hands raised on line. The first is Adrian Gonzalez, and again, we're on the consent calendar.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Thank you. So my name's Adrian Gonzalez, I'm a District Three community member, specifically the Gardenland Northgate area, and I just wanted to express happiness to call in and support of the Northgate Boulevard transportation plan. I would like to encourage anyone in chambers to read all 120 pages of the plan. I want to send a special gratitude to Leslie Mancebo and everyone who played a vital role in developing this much-needed update to Northgate Boulevard's infrastructure. There's been plans before, backdated to 2003 and 2006, that's 17 to 20 years too long to wait for needed improvements for traffic safety and uplifting a long overdue community. I'm very thankful to Leslie for her advocacy and her commitment to Northgate Boulevard, and appreciate every time she showed her face in our community. Lastly, I would just like to stress how important this plan is to improve our community in South Natomas and to keep our community kids safe, supporting Vision Zero. Northgate Boulevard has classified as a high-injury network street and is the sixth worst corridor overall. Please support Northgate.
Thank you for your comments. I did forget one, Marbea Sala. I apologize, you were in my wrong stack. And then we have three more on line.
I was gonna say, I'm back.
Glad you're back.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As president of Gardenland Northgate Neighborhood Association, I first want to thank Jennifer Leslie and her team for this beautifully well-articulated design for Northgate. In 2021, the city partnered with GNNA yet again to seek input from the community on what they wanted to see happen on Northgate that will address safety, reduce vehicle emissions, and celebrate the unique cultural heritage of Northgate Gardenland community. Under Leslie's leadership, she held a robust community engagement that included printed and digital surveys in different languages, community workshops, pop-up events, youth engagement, business engagement, and walking workshops along Northgate, which was a little bit scary there. As a result, our community is in complete support of this plan before you. I don't need to tell you that the Northgate Corridor is on Vision Zero's top 10 list for the highest number of severe and fatal crashes. As a matter of fact, five months ago, one of our elders was killed trying to get onto Northgate by a speeding vehicle. A critical component to this plan is ensuring the safety of our most vulnerable community, our children who want to ride their bikes, our older adults who just want to walk, and persons with disability. It's rare that I, when I'm driving on Northgate, that I see individuals walking or biking, and then I say to myself, wow, they're courageous. In addition to making Northgate a smart street, this plan acknowledges and celebrates our neighborhood's identity by acknowledging the importance of art that will encourage economic development and a sense of place and belonging. Seventy million is a tall order, but together with our newly-elected congressman and senator and new council, within five years, we can make this a reality to transform Northgate into a place where we work, play, and...
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Dan Allison, and then Jared.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Dan Allison, resident of District Four. I wish to speak against item six, the Freeport Boulevard plan. In contrast to the Northgate plan, which obviously has community support, the Freeport plan largely ignored community input. Two problems, things that were set beforehand but never communicated to the community, is that speed reductions would not be considered, and lane reductions would not be considered, but that was not shared ahead of time. The community also made a strong request for trees, but space for trees was not set aside in the plan except in very few locations. So I would like this plan sent back to staff to modify it and better reflect what the community wants. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jared. Jared, if you'll unmute.
Hi, sorry. I meant to be on the off agenda items, so I'm sorry.
Julie Rotten will be our final speaker on consent.
Good afternoon. Julie Rotten, the executive director at Stanford Settlement Neighborhood Center. Mayor and councilmembers, I want to thank you for adopting the plan for Northgate Boulevard. All the previous speakers have outlined in great and excellent detail of why it's so important. I just also want to thank Leslie and her team. During the process of creating this plan, we hosted some focus groups here at Stanford Settlement, and my favorite thing that happened, two things. One is that our senior center gave the history of Northgate Boulevard to Leslie and the team, and I appreciated their patience and really interest in the history of Northgate Boulevard. But my favorite thing that happened during this process was, in a focus group with some of our team center participants, at the end of the time together, one of the teens said, "So is the city trying to do what's best for the people or what the people want?" And that was quite profound for us, and for me, it was mission accomplished. So thank you for a great process and hearing the voices in our community, all of them, and I look forward to seeing great things on Northgate Boulevard in the years ahead. Thanks.
Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent.
Thank you. Let's turn it to the council on the consent calendar. Vice Mayor Gata?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to thank and recognize all the great work of the Gardenland Northgate Neighborhood Association for Marbea Salas and David Guerrero and others who've called in. You know, I was proud of support and really champion with our former council members, Hanson, and on Vision Zero back in 2015, 2016, to really highlight the issues. And in that process, we heard clearly from communities like Northgate. I represent Stockton Boulevard, but we were seeing the same issues, you know, the two in Marysville Boulevard, Northgate Boulevard, Stockton Boulevard, Freeport and Franklin, about the dangers of our commercial corridors that were once highways and now are wrapped around residential neighborhoods. And the dangers of what that's created, both, you know, young people who don't want to walk around, who are, who also, you know, and that leads to other health issues and challenges. But again, I wanted to thank the staff for this work, and I also wanted to, I know I've heard comments from Freeport, you know, the community members who had concerns about this issue, and to say that this, the Vision Zero is still, we still have a long ways to go, and you even heard this from the Northgate and Gardenland community, we still have next steps to move forward, and in this process, you know, this commitment to move forward, I think, is what's important in this site. I do want to thank all the great staff work, I think, looking at the Bike Master Plan, and if anything, we heard this morning at the State of the Downtown, we have to have better direct connected bikeways that are safe for folks to be able to move forward. Overall, Mr. Mayor, I think this consent calendar has a lot of great successes here, and with that, I'd like to move the consent calendar.
I think it's been moved and seconded already.
Oh, it has.
It has been, that's okay. Third is fine.
Third, yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan to come back?
Let's, yeah, Councilmember Kaplan. Let's call the roll slowly.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloe? Councilmember Talamontes is absent. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Thinking. Yes, but here's the thing, let's keep the roll open. Let's keep the roll open for a colleague to come back, okay? The roll is open. It's not a final vote yet. What's that?
Consent calendar.
The consent calendar, the roll is open. Is that okay, Madam City Attorney?
Councilmember Kaplan?
Kaplan on the consent calendar.
How do you vote on the consent calendar?
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, good. Now we have a unanimous vote, and I didn't have to try my unorthodox procedural...
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to let the caller know they called on the Freeport transportation plan, that there'll be an opportunity for his voice to continue to be heard and make sure that the community will have their voice heard as well. So even though we're making that decision to move forward today, we're still gonna listen to the voice of the people as we move forward to make sure that we get the safest transit possible. So I just want that caller to know that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for saying that. Okay, the consent calendar is passed, let's move now to the public hearings, item 12.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Happy to, my name's Sean DeCoursey, Preservation Director with the Community Development Department. I'm happy to present the nomination for the zoo entrance structures to the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources. First, a little bit of background, in 2011, the Department of Youth Parks Community Enrichment surveyed William Land Park for historic resources. This was the first time that the zoo entrance structures were identified as potentially historic resources. Then in 2015, the Community Development Department received a grant to study mid-century modern architecture in Sacramento. This survey identified the architects Ricky and Brooks as master architects of the mid-century period, including for the Googie architectural style, which is exhibited by the entrance structures you see here. Sacramento Modern, a local advocacy group for mid-century architecture in Sacramento, then prepared a national register nomination for these structures, which has formed the basis for this local nomination. The Preservation Commission reviewed a draft ordinance on November 16, 2022, and unanimously recommended these structures as eligible under City Code Criteria III and IV for the Googie mid-century modern architectural style and for their design by master architects Ricky and Brooks. The public has responded very favorably to this nomination. We've received over 370 public comments supporting the nomination, and none opposed. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. DeCoursey, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last council meeting, we talked about the reuse, I asked some questions about the reuse of this particular project, and I got a chance to talk to staff and was very satisfied with the information that I got. Also got a chance to talk to the public, and as you said, a large number of people have called in and written in support of the project, and I just want them to know that I support the project now with the information I've received as well. With that, I'd like to move the item.
Second.
I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item.
And I have one commenter on this item? Take the public?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. I have one speaker, Preservation Sacramento.
Hello, this is William Berg. I'm president of Preservation Sacramento, and we sent out a call for emails of support for listing the zoo entrance. Got 381 emails in five days. Now, landmarking a place recognizes its importance to our past, but it also helps secure its future. People love our historic places, as you can see from the enormous public response to this nomination. People like to visit these places, spend money, and live near them. They draw economic activity and investment. Listing the zoo entrance helps ensure the future of this structure and provides a tangible, physical link to the past on the site, even if the current use of the property changes. Thank you to Councilmember Jennings for supporting this item and moving it forward, and for reading the resolution for Black History Month. As I'm sure you know, the city's preservation staff is researching stories and sites associated with Black history as potential future landmarks. I encourage all members of the council to consider, where are the unrecognized historic places in your district, and whose stories can they tell? But today, all I ask of you is that you vote yes to list the zoo entrance in the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Very good, I know. Councilmember Valenzuela, did you have a comment on this?
Yeah, the vice mayor beat me to second the item, but just wanted to say thank you to the preservation staff. I know you work on these things for a really long time, and as my colleague mentioned, the zoo is beloved for many a reason, and anybody who's been on Land Park Drive knows that entrance and knows what that entrance looks like. It is so much a part of Land Park that having this marked as historic resource makes just all the sense in the world, so honorary second, if that's okay, vice mayor, and thank you, team, for bringing this forward.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. Opposed, abstained. Okay, it passes unanimously. Now let's move on to item 13, the Natomas Basin Plan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Cheryl Hodge, Principal Planner with Community Development Department, and I will be speaking about our Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan this evening. All new development within Natomas Basin is subject to the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan, our HCP, and the implementation agreement executed between the city and the federal and state wildlife resource agencies. The HCP specifies avoidance measures and mitigation for loss of habitat and incidental take coverage. Prior to new grading, development located in Natomas Basin, which is North Natomas and South Natomas for the city of Sacramento, is subject to the payment of HCP fees. Per the requirements of the city's HCP and the HCP implementation agreement, on an annual basis, the city considers a fee adjustment in order to ensure the accuracy of the funding to implement the HCP. This year, a fee increase is proposed for the 2023 construction season. The current fee without land dedication is $43,968 per gross acre, with a proposed increase to $45,565. The fee with land dedication is currently $27,718 per gross acre, and is proposed to be increased to $29,815, or, I'm sorry, yeah, $29,815. Historically, the fee has kept, been kept stable. As I mentioned, historically, the fee has been kept stable. For example, 17 years ago, in 2006, and I have these highlighted on the table here, in 2006, the fee was $41,182 per acre. And then in 2010, it was $44,050 per acre. So, you know, over, you know, 17 years period, it's stayed pretty stable. The increased adjustment is needed to accurately reflect the current costs of implementing the HCP. The Natomas Basin Conservancy Board and city staff recommend that the city council adopt the resolution that would increase the HCP fees. City staff is available for any questions you may have. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Cheryl, for this and staff for the briefing. Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you remember, this was started back in the day with Heather Fargo and Ray Tretheway, as we saw the future growth of the Natomas Basin. And it's called a basin for a reason, that protecting the habitat out there is really important. To this day, we have over 5,100 protected acres. We all know Natomas is developing, and this fee will help us purchase more land to protect more species, of which there are 22 plant and animal species out there, some that carry a threatened or endangered conservation status. So this fee is modest. I thank Cheryl for showing the historical, that this fee has gone up and down with the times, but the ability to be able to acquire more land for the protection while that area is developed is, this is definitely really needed, and I hope I can have the council's support in opening and closing this hearing, and I'd like to make a motion to move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have public testimony on the item?
Mayor, I have no public testimony on this item.
Well, that's different from 30 years ago, huh?
Yeah. It is.
Shows how far we've come, right? And how many battles have been fought. Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. That passes unanimously. We now move to item 14, which is the third-party appeal related to a proposed cannabis dispensary through the core program at 7909 Bruceville Road. Staff, and then the appellant, the applicant and the appellant, I know we're going to want to hear from, and let us begin.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. I'm Robert Williams, with the Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. With me over there is Kevin Hawker, the Zoning Administrator. This is P 22020 at 7909 Bruceville Road. It's an appeal of a Planning and Design Commission approval to establish a cannabis dispensary, a storefront cannabis dispensary, and it is a site plan and design review for, excuse me, for minor renovations. So, let's see. Okay, tonight, I'm going to go over the background of this project, the project location, the project description, talk about when Planning and Design Commission reviews are required as opposed to zoning administrator, conditional use permit, talk about the appeal, public notice and comment themes, and finally, the staff recommendation for the project. For the hearing background, we've had several hearings that were scheduled. September 22, 2022, the applicant requested, and the Planning and Design Commission granted it continues to October 13, 2022. On October 13, 2022, this was the day after we learned of a substance abuse treatment facility nearby. After we conducted this public hearing, the Planning and Design Commission continued this item to a date uncertain. And then we had a hearing on December 8, 2022, and the Planning and Design Commission reviewed the project with the proposed substance abuse, with the existing substance abuse facility nearby, and approved the requested entitlements with a 10 to 1 vote. An appeal was filed on December 19, 2022. Here is a project location showing where it's located, south of Mac Road and west of the Highway 99 freeway on Bruceville Road. Here is the property itself. That single building is on the property, and I've highlighted in red there the actual tenant space of this proposed dispensary. Here's a street view, showing it from the street through the parking lot. And up close here, I want you to take a look at the windows there. It's on, it's the windows on the left side of the column and the right side of the column, and the storefront windows on the right side of the column will be removed, and then the entry will be on the left side of the column. But it's basically that bistro Filipino space right there. Here's a project showing the zoning, surrounding zoning. It's all C2 zone on this property and behind it. And then to the south is the hospital, Kaiser Hospital, I believe, in the hospital zone and surrounding zoning. Okay, the project description. We've got a conditional use permit for storefront cannabis dispensary with a delivery service and site plan and design review for minor exterior renovations. These include front and rear tenant improvements. Here is the floor, actually, the site plan, showing the tenant and the five other tenants that are on the property. Here is the floor plan itself. You can see that there's an entrance on the left side there, lobby waiting area, and then that's where you're screened, and then you go to the main cannabis display area. Oh, and I want to point out the delivery area in the back that's being added too, to provide secure loading and unloading. Here's the project site with the elevation proposed, showing the storefront area on the left and the new entrance, and then the walled off area for the former storefront on the right. Okay. Cannabis storefront dispensaries. The Planning and Design Commission review is required when it's within 600 feet of a storefront dispensary, 600 feet of any park, childcare center, in-home childcare, youth-oriented facility, church or faith congregation, substance abuse center or cinema, within 600 feet of a tobacco retailer, or within 300 feet of residential zone. That's when it requires Planning and Design Commission review as opposed to the zoning administrator. But it's prohibited within 600 feet of a K through 12 school. And this site is within 600 feet of a substance abuse center and 600 feet of two tobacco retailers. Now, here's a bit about the substance abuse facility. Here's the project site, lined in yellow, and our approximation of where the substance abuse facility has located into the building next door. On the substance abuse rehab facility, staff didn't have any information in the staff report prior to the October 13 hearing, because we just found out about it the day before. There is no land use entitlement required for substance abuse facility. They can just locate into the site with, without a conditional use permit. They do need a business operation tax certificate, and that was applied for, I believe, in October. California Health Department Services zoning verification was requested on October 13. That's a license through the state of California. For the substance abuse facility, City Code does not address pending cannabis permit applications or the timing of sensitive use establishment. What I mean is that this applicant was applied before we knew that the substance abuse facility was there, but we have no code that says, you know, they're okay if we find them late. So a newly established sensitive use could affect how the outcome in the report of the application. Let's see. This site is within 600 feet of the substance abuse rehab facility and two tobacco retailers. Those uses are the two uses, types of uses that we found within 600 feet that we regulate. The other non-regulate uses within 600 feet are six businesses selling alcohol. The code doesn't distinguish that as far as going to the zoning administrator, planning commission for the initial review. Here's the project site and nearby uses, showing a restaurant next door, places that sell beer and wine, retail store, highlighted there. Staff is recommending approval of this project. This is guided by Title 17, the physical environment, the characteristics of the land use. We're not here to discuss the pathology of substance abuse, because staff has no qualifications for that. We're just focusing on the product and the potential to convey the product sold cannabis. This project proposes to reduce the storefront glass by over half, and they're proposing to limit their signage so it doesn't display any cannabis or cannabis imagery in there. And the City Code requires that there's no cannabis products be visible to the public. You have to actually go in and pass the lobby to see anything. To reduce visual recognition of cannabis sold on-site, Planning and Design Commission posed a condition stating, pursuant to the permit's request, signage for the cannabis dispensary shall exclude the use of the word cannabis as well as imagery consistent with the cannabis plant, including its leaves. Public noticing, on May 6, 2022, staff provided an early notice to all property owners and occupants within 500-foot radius and all registered community groups within 500-foot radius. On September 9, 2022, we provided a public hearing notice for, for, it's the September 22nd hearing, and that was continued to October 13. And then we heard about the substance abuse facility. On November 22, we provided a new hearing notice for the Planning and Design Commission, and that was for the December 8 hearing. And then on February 10, 2023, we provided a public hearing notice for the city council We had over 80 comments received for this September 22 Planning and Design Commission hearing, 50 more for the October 13 hearing, and then 100-plus ecomments for the December 8 hearing. Reasons for support included general health benefit, general health benefits, small women minority on business, feel safe, secure at cannabis businesses, employment opportunities, better access to legal cannabis, safety, economic development, increased safety in core applicant. The opposition was about over-concentration crime, not local business, lack of outreach, schools and hospitals in close proximity, unsafe crime increase, incompatibility with substance abuse rehab center. Key findings from a comprehensive cannabis study. There's a comprehensive cannabis study, and there's key findings about how that affects neighborhoods and businesses. Cannabis businesses have not had a negative impact on other nearby retail or industrial uses, have not had a negative impact on nearby home values, and have not created increases in crime beyond the levels generated by other businesses. The industry does not appear to produce negative economic effects on commercial and residential districts. Staff recommends denial of appeal and approval of the project based upon the findings of fact and conditions of approval within the draft resolution. This project replaces a vacant tenant space with employment and tax revenue generating use. Conditions assure a safe and productive operation of the property that will not be a nuisance to the neighborhood and community. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, well, thank you very, very much. Since this is a quasi-judicatory hearing based upon an appeal, is it appropriate, Madam City Attorney, for us to first hear from the appellant, and then from the applicant, then open it up to public testimony?
Yes, that's correct, ma'am.
Okay, very good. So let's hear from the appellant here. Do we need to open the hearing? Okay, I deem the hearing open. Is that, okay. All right.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and council, city members. Just to introduce myself, my name is Vicki Maggaby. I'm a psychiatric nurse practitioner and CEO of Diamond House Detox, a little history about our business. We opened in 2017, and we have substance use treatment centers that are residential in and around Elk Grove and as well as South SAC. Through serving clients in detox and residential, we found that we needed a avenue for them to continue with aftercare. It increases their ability to succeed in recovery, and so this location specifically was chosen for us to be able to provide our clients aftercare as well as address the substance use needs in the community of South SAC and Sacramento in general. We provide detox residential, partial hospitalization, as well as intensive outpatient. Specifically, in this location, we provide partial hospitalization services as well as intensive outpatient, as well as outpatient. Our focus is primarily on substance use is our, is what we treat, but we also serve secondary mental health. So many of our clients are deemed dual diagnosis, co-occurring, and they also have some sort of underlying mental health that we believe is contributing to the substance use. This location specifically, I know there's been a lot of dates being thrown around. We signed our lease in November of 2021. At that point, we did not know that there was a pending cannabis dispensary or anything that was coming next door. We admitted our first client in February 22 of 2022, so several months after we did our build-out, we admitted our first client. Joint Commission is our accrediting body, and so we, once you have active census, we submit that to Joint Commission. They reviewed it, and on March 2, we were given the approval to operate legally. There's also Department of Healthcare Services. We submitted sometime in between March and October. They had thrown back a lot of requirements of what they needed to do our certification. That is just something that we did not need to have, but it makes our program more valid. So we did that as well, and so that came November 3rd. We currently serve an average census of about 25 to 30 clients that come into that facility. We operate from morning all the way at 10:00 a.m., and our evening outpatient closes at about 8:30. So our clients are in and out of that building pretty much all day, Monday through Friday. We have about 15 staff that we employ there. So we are fully functioning, and we are operating and have been since around February. From my perspective, this appeal is more of a land use issue than anything and should be focused on the conditional use permit. I know that there's a lot of discussion about the applicant and dispensary and marijuana being for health reasons, and I don't disagree with anything. I think the applicant is qualified. I think the core program is a good program, and I don't have anything against cannabis dispensaries in general. I think a lot of people do use it recreationally and very responsibly. But for my clients, that a lot of them are struggling with that substance. I know that Robert also read the Title 17 codes, and it basically does state that there is compatible, incompatible uses with this dispensary being so close to a substance use treatment center. There are nine sensitive uses that are close to this specific location with the dispensary. I feel like this issue should have probably been something that was voted on by planning, but I think the conversations in some of those meetings went all over the place, and it was really hard for the planning commission to kind of make a decision because a lot of them even admitted they didn't know a lot about substance use or mental health enough to really speak to how this would affect that. I know that Robert also brought up the comprehensive cannabis study on how this would affect the area. And I did review it, and in the health section, it just basically states that it wasn't studied. So they studied, you know, all kinds of different financial impacts and stuff like that, but it wasn't really looked at as far as how this would affect people with their mental health and substance use. I read through Lacretia's Neighborhood Community Plan. She mentions that the neighborhood contact, it basically describes any contact you've had with the following neighbors, property owners, adjacent substance use or subject site, neighborhood associations, business associations, or community groups. She just wrote, "Project site is surrounded by commercial properties, northeast, south sides. There are residential properties on the west side." So really, no indication on what she did to contact the neighborhood or the surrounding businesses. She also has a community relations plan that's in her CUP. And it basically says that she will maintain a dedicated monitored phone line and email addresses. All calls will be logged and categorized. And, you know, she'll perform a monthly review. There's really nothing in here that is stating how she notified the surrounding area. I did speak with my landlord. She was notified with a notice and decided not to notify me. I feel like the current way how this is being managed, it makes it hard because she really doesn't have any incentive to tell me. We were in the middle of expanding and also signing a new lease for a longer term. So her telling me that this was coming really was not something that would be a good idea for her. She was also in the middle of selling the building, so did not also tell the person purchasing the building that this was coming up. When I drive to work, there are two entrances. There's no way for me to see the sign that states that that is coming up. I do not even pass it in order to get to work to and from. So I just, I don't see how I would have known that this was coming. Her application was written on 12/31, but if you look at the date that it was accepted and filed, it was April 12th. And our Google verification let us know that we were live on April 4th. So there were many months where I think staff, as well as the applicant, could have found me. An easy kind of walk next door, knock on some of the doors would have found me. She, you know, didn't have trouble finding me kind of later on. And so I did ask kind of fat ducks next door, the all-state guys, some of my neighbors that I talk to on a daily basis, "Have you spoken with the applicant?" And none of them really, one didn't know it was even coming up. The person in my building and the pizza place next door also had not had an actual conversation with her about it. He thought it was medical marijuana only. Some other points that I would like to bring up. City of Costa Mesa, recently, last year in 2022, also faced the same issue. Cannabis dispensary in a building with a substance use treatment center. They basically denied it before it even made it to any sort of council meeting. It was in planning commission. They said, called it incompatible with nearby recovering programs, including drug and alcohol counseling provided and potentially detrimental to adjacent businesses and residents. They also stated that they don't believe the efforts were undertaken to reach out to the community regarding the application, and that's why they denied it. I have a couple of letters from a couple of my colleagues that have treatment centers, lots of experience working in treatment centers, where there were liquor stores that were approved right next door or across the street from the treatment center, and those did have damaging effects. Clients, their relapse rates were up because people would leave against medical advice, go to the liquor store. Sometimes those items were brought into the facility, thereby also potentially risking those that are in the treatment center from relapsing as well. So a couple of letters, one facility that's in off of Fair Oaks, that happened, and another one over in the Bay Area. I feel like this sets a precedence when you, when you guys approve, if you guys do approve this, it just sets a kind of a gray area where you guys set the codes and you guys list the sensitive uses, but that if it is approved, they are ignored. And so this kind of leaves a gray area for pretty much anything where, you know, you write in the code that these are things that we need to watch out for, but we're kind of not going to, you know, really think about what the impacts are to that. The last point I have is this conditional use permit does not stick with the applicant. So we talk a lot about the applicant and the core program and all that, but this conditional use permit goes with the building, and I think that gets ignored a lot. If she chooses not to be in the business or if she decides, you know, it doesn't work out, someone else with a different marketing plan and a whole different set of way of doing business that may not be what she has indicated can go in there and sell marijuana however they want. And that is also a huge risk for me. You know, we can, me and the applicant can work out marketing plans and things like that, but in the end, she can also leave that site, and I would be left with pretty much whoever that decides to use that site for a dispensary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I know, we're gonna have some questions for you. I'm not cutting you off because there isn't a time limit exactly, but I think we've, we've got it. For now, is that okay?
That is okay.
Gee, why don't you stay close? Because we're gonna hear from the applicant now. And then, I think, before we get to the public testimony, I'm gonna turn it over to the council member for questions of the appellant and the applicant, so we can really get the the foundation, the essence of it, before we turn it over for public testimony. So stay, stay close, okay?
Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Just appreciate the enthusiasm, but let's...
My apologies.
No apologies. Keep it, keep it going in terms of the discussion. Go right ahead.
Hello, so I woke up yesterday and...
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, yes. My name is Lacretia Young. I am a Core Second Cohort Core graduate of the Sacramento Greater Urban League Sacrament Equity Program. So yesterday, when I woke up, I turned the news on and first AME church in East Bay. It is the oldest black church in East Bay, burnt down. It's devastating and kind of reminding us of some of the ups and downs that we go through. I bring them up because it is Black History Month. I am from St. Andrews AME Church, and we are the oldest black church on the Pacific West Coast. So I wanted to take a moment to give prayers to that community as well. It reminded me why I'm here, my lifelong training, my genuine care and concern for this community, and the forward motion for my people, and it is my time. I want to thank Protocol for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I want to thank the planners for their hard and diligent and repetitive work to give some insight. I looked at the last three dispensary applications. In May, it was 40 pages. In September, it was 92 pages. In January, it is 68 pages, and our application is 345 pages. So I thank them for their work in compiling this. I want to thank those who supported us and thought were deep, through eComment. I want to thank my community, my team members, my AME church, my fellow equity warriors. I will be giving my presentation. I will be introducing myself and the project. And if we have any questions, technical questions about the site, I will take those and get back to you on those if we need to. I recently got married to the sun to my shine, Deontay Young. He's a print shop owner. We've been honored to print for the Sacramento NAACP, as well as many other conferences and marches here in Sacramento. I am a Sacramento Cream Team member who just placed the first and only black-owned soft-serve machines with our uniquely black delicious fan favorite cold treat. We were just hosted by the Golden One Center as the King's Pop-Up Kitchen for Black History Month and Pride this month. Just had my 40th. I'm still my grandma's baby. I was raised here in Sacramento. I went to Harkness Elementary School. I lived with my mom in middle school, then I moved back. I attended Burbank High School. I graduated from Visions in Education. I am a fourth-generation South Sacramento person here. I, right across from where my proposed dispensary is, I had my four children turning 21, 18, and twins turning 14. I take my grandmother there, who is 82, who is currently going through some health issues, and I manage my own multiple sclerosis right there across the street at that Kaiser. I've even spent some of my last dollars right there at that Dollar Tree to provide for my children in that same shopping center. I am from Sacramento. I have attended historical St. Andrews AME Church all my life, where I matriculated through the youth programs. I am the current youth director. I'm a missionary. Y'all heard me say it in good and regular standings. That means I go to my meetings. And we participate in missions and outreach locally and globally. We work with the Travelers Aid and the annual Eleanor Tilson Christmas holiday baskets and Thanksgiving baskets. We fed thousands of families. I work with the Wind Youth Center, as well as the Muster See School. And these are ongoing projects I've committed to in the community all my life. I am also the owner of LaFlore Coast Wellness Company, as highlighted in Good Day Sacramento, where I provide products, accessories, and attire, and many more items that contribute to one's overall wellness. It's a company and brand that was born from the Business Resource Center from the Urban League and through CORE. So from that idea to me actually opening those doors, I kind of want to give my gratitude for the foundation that they provided. Because it is through this company that I'm able to curate wellness recommendations and cannabis education. Things that I found helped me along the way, including non-THC CBD, in which we are also the premier CBD provider in the Golfers Digest for Sacramento and the foothills. All right, we're gonna try this thing. My proposed location is at 7909 Bruceville. It consists of 2,674 square feet of retail space. The building is Zoned C2, general commercial, consistent with the proposed use for a cannabis retail dispensary. There is a total of 74 parking spaces, provided with a required amount of 42 exceeding parking required, parking required by code. This location is in the proper zone, and it is where the city intended for cannabis retailers to be able to locate. This location does meet city code and will operate in compliance with all zoning and cannabis ordinance. We do not have any prohibited uses in our area. We do have sensitive uses, which do require the review of the Planning and Design Commission. Those sensitive uses are the two tobacco centers and the substance abuse center. After review, the Planning and Design Commission did determine that they still want to recommend approval for the opening of our location. The decision, however, was appealed by the rehab. The appeal requested continued by the rehab. And tonight, the Project de Novo, from Scott, is being presented to you, the mayor and council. It is our request that you continue to support CORE, continue to help us remove the barriers that exist for us to operate, and that a motion be given to deny the appeal and therefore uphold their approved CUP. So to paint a picture, once we open, we will provide a variety of cannabis products, including equity products. Some of the most important products that need to be on our shelves. And this will be for a variety of patients, those, yes, legal ability, recreationally, yes, but also the professionals, the grandparents, and other chronic pain sufferers like myself. As we discuss cannabis, we assume the perception of smoke and odor and weed smokers. But I want to highlight that we have other cannabis products as well, such as sols, drops, beverages, capsules, smokeless options. And cannabis is a highly regulated market. And we will ensure the testing and safety of all products and also work to, work to operate above board. Being a member of the community and ensuring that we maintain a discreet aesthetic with minimal signage, as shown above here on the slide, is of top importance to our business. Myself, our community relations officer, will be available by phone 24/7. I am on the other line with my team. My number will be given out to the surrounding businesses, as well as posted publicly in the front window, and we will employ nuisance and lording control from our discreet security and staff and ensure odor mitigation, filters, and policy. Most importantly, keeping an ongoing dialogue and outreach to the community to relieve any issues or concerns will always be our top priority. In providing a scope of my project timeline, Robert did such a good job of going through some of those dates. Might have went back a little bit too far, but I'll just, I'll just summarize those, and this is available for anyone. So as a result of the November 20, November 2016 passage of Prop 64, California voters approved the Adult Use of Marijuana Act for recreational cannabis. So in 2017, the Institute for More, founded by Malika Amen, emerged as the leading community leader and policy negotiator that successfully advocated for Sacramento's adoption of the CORE ordinance. The ordinance included $2 million in funds for business technical assistance programs to help CORE entrepreneurs enter the legal market. In addition to the technical assistance, the city's CORE ordinance has lowered approximately $13 million in business startup capital funds from state government. We are supported. On March 20, March 26, 2019, the city council awarded the contracts to two organizations to administer the program, Asian Chamber, the Sacramento Asian Chamber of Commerce, and the Greater Sacramento Urban League, who I went through. Late 2019, my husband and I would go to that orientation for GSO. Myself, my husband, my partners, we decided to step up to the challenge. Along with approximately 300, 300 qualified individual CORE persons. Out of that 300, I would get my documents together, my business plan to apply to get into a cohort with 15 people. Just to give you a scope of how hard it is to even get into the class in the first place. Our class started January 2020. We were in the middle of a pandemic. We graduated in that pandemic, April 2020. While we were there, we were part of the team that gave input on the RSQ, Request for Qualifications, that would be coming up for the dispensary lottery. That lottery would open up January 7, 2021, and close February 19. That means we had less, we had a little bit over a month to submit our life-changing plans to apply for a cannabis dispensary out here. And we did. April 2021, we would be one of the 10 out of over 120 applications to receive an opportunity to open a cannabis in Sacramento. Through negotiations, looking for the locations, even looking in the suite that the substance abuse center is now in, before we went to our location, we had to find and go through many companies to commit to culture, who is who I decided to go with now. August, we secured our lease. October, we initiated our application with the planning department. And then in November, the Substance Abuse Center did sign their lease. As Robert pointed out, the notices did go out. The notices would go out in May, they would go out in September from their department. However, we did set a path forward for community outreach. We attended the community meetings, which is how we got our discussion with the Meterview Neighborhood Association President Jesse Reese, which is how I received a letter from the North Laguna Valley High Creek President Rhonda Henderson. We attended those meetings. We did go knock door to door, and that is how we got to 350 pages. Only 80-something of those pages are the application. The rest are letters in which they are overwhelmingly in support of us. Even after the discovery of the rehab, we went back out with a change.org petition and updated petitions, informing the community that the rehab was discovered in our process and asking them again if they would support. And then after the appeal and the continuance, we went back out to the community so that we can get updated letters of support. Common concerns is that the belief that the presence of a dispensary may have negative impacts on those in recovery. And there is some evidence to actually suggest otherwise. Studies have shown that access to medical cannabis can have a positive, can have positive effects on patients undergoing addiction treatment. For example, a study conducted by the University of California, Los Angeles, found that medical cannabis can help individuals in recovery management with withdrawal symptoms, reduce cravings, and improve overall well-being. Furthermore, the presence of a dispensary can provide additional resources and support for those in recovery, such as access to the information on harm reduction and substance abuse services. Studies have also shown that having a significant number of dispensaries can provide access to legal and safe cannabis for consumers, while reducing the need for illegal and potentially dangerous sources of cannabis, which speaks to the concern about oversaturation. A study conducted by the University of California, San Francisco, found that increased access to legal cannabis was associated with a decrease in the rates of fatal opioid overdoses. And the evidence suggests that having a sufficient number of cannabis dispensaries can have a positive impact on public health and the economy. While it is important to regulate and oversee the cannabis industry, an oversaturation of dispensaries is not necessarily a negative outcome and not a factor in DA, which is where I am wanting to open. Through October to November, from the time that we discovered the rehab till the time that we got to our December 8 hearing, we would do multiple efforts of research, including open houses, which is right in the location, the vicinity, as well as the post that is, yes, at one of the entrances, right in front of the sign marquee to our location. My sign is the only one there, big orange piece of paper with all of my personal information. And we tried to encourage those as we went around, business owners alike, including Fat Ducks, who signed a support letter for us, to contact us if they had any questions now or developing in regards to this project. We made sure to keep ourselves available and to maintain an audience for anyone who did have any questions and concerns, and we did not have those. 12A, we would present our project, providing the timeline, the information, and as mentioned, we were approved. I was actually encouraged on that hearing, that evening, as the rehab stated that they actually were not quite familiar with the area and that they had not found out about Fat Ducks serving beer until after they had located there, but stayed. So that tells us that there is a formula that they've accepted in order for them to reconcile having had located near a visible and easily accessible trigger. So we are asking that those same considerations, that same path that was taken after the beer was discovered, that we too can have that same dialogue and try to find that same path. I do believe it's because of the nature and the stance of this and other rehabs, which is to assist those living with and overcoming their triggers. And as an outpatient center within, with not 600 feet within us, anyone who comes to this outpatient center would have to pass a trigger in the path on there, even before they get to me. So there is some room for discussion on how we can be good neighbors and also possibly mitigate what's going on around us with the other six triggers that the city staff did point out were already there before the substance abuse center located there. It is important to note that factors such as genetics, mental health, social, and environmental factors, and access to drugs also do play a role in the development of drug use patterns. Additionally, according to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, the criminalization of cannabis has been shown to increase the likelihood of individuals using more dangerous and addictive drugs, as they are often obtained from the same illegal sources. In conclusion, while the relationship between cannabis, cannabis use, and the use of other drugs is complex, the evidence does not show the idea that cannabis is the gateway drug and is moving forward in conversations towards cannabis-assisted treatment, including the FDA recognizing the potential benefits of marijuana and having approved two drugs already containing the plant. Again, as the World Health Organization has determined, correlation does not imply causation. So we have to be very careful when we are reeducating the community about cannabis, that we do not give misinformation or continue to go backwards on conversations we've already passed.
If you could sum it up, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem. Let's skip to the end for you. So in closing, I encourage all with cannabis policy, all who have concerns with cannabis policy or impacts, to continue to read the recent studies. Doing so will not only answer some of those questions that we have about cannabis, but it will help us to improve on some of these policies. The question of overconcentration is not an issue. We do want to be able to offer different business models for cannabis to the different consumers. And my proposed location, the branding, is about providing a needed and desired product to the community, highlighting the true benefits and education behind the product. To conclude, my dispensary will work to exceed the expectations. We are invested in the project and the community. We are willing and wanting to be a good neighbor, open seven and nine with quality products, tight scheduling, and folks from the community who care about the community to put back in the community. I am proof that this program can work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Thank you, thank you. All right. Why don't you, again, Ms. Maccabae, if you can come up maybe to the front row here, because I do want to turn it over now to the council for questions of the appellant and/or applicant, so we can kind of get the back and forth going here. And I'm going to start with the council member whose district.
Thank you, Mayor.
This proposed project resides in Mayor Protemveg.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And I know we're going to be listening to public comment before we decide a path forward. But first, I just want to say thank you to city staff for your thorough presentation. I want to thank the appellant here today as well for your presentation, and also the applicant. I think for me, this third-party appeal all around highlights really just the gap we have in our planning system. Again, I want to thank the appellant. I want to thank the applicant, and I also want to thank city staff for their hard work. But for me, what's really unfortunate at hand, and the reason why we're here today, is really because both the applicant and the appellant were not aware of each other's businesses during our city planning process, and that's the reason why we're here today. But that's what we signed up for as city council member, right, to make these tough decisions, but also to make changes in the system. And I'll talk a little bit about some recommendations that I might have moving forward. But I do have several questions to our city staff, to the appellant and the applicant. I've had a chance to meet with city staff, a little bit with the appellant, and also with the applicant as well. But I think it's important for me to ask some questions again, because the public has called me, asking multiple questions, and so I want to make sure that I'm thorough with the questions and so we put everything on record. So first, I'll just go into, I'll go in the order of the presentation, so I'd like for city staff to come up to the podium just to answer a few questions. Thank you. It's Robert and?
Evan Collin, the zoning administrator.
Evan, thank you. So my understanding, I know that our planning commissioners have done their due diligence to hearing before the appeal. And my understanding is that the CUP went to planning commission because two sensitive uses were flagged. And so my questions to you, and I know, Robert, you kind of covered this a little bit in the presentation, but I understand that detox facilities are also included in the list of sensitive uses. So my question to you is, why was Diamond House Detox Clinic not flagged at the time as a sensitive use when it first came to the planning commission?
Sure. If I could walk you through the staff review process from application submittal. The applicant is required to submit what we call a sensitive radius map. So it would map out, they would canvass the neighborhood to identify properties within 600 feet for those sensitive uses, as well as residential zoning within 300 feet. Upon submittal, the Diamond House Detox is not located on that submitted map. And as you've heard the chronology of events, we did not, there was not a record that we were able to locate in the review of city archives as it related to any land use entitlement, any building permit record, or any business operating tax certificate. So for our purposes, including looking at Google, we did not see that there was, in fact, a sensitive use next door, and that came to light through public comment before, the day before the hearing, which is why that hearing was continued. So for our purposes, there was not an indication that there was such a use. It did not, however, change the level of review. The level was already at the commission, as you described.
Thanks. Just to put on record, so when you, once the applicant submitted their application, you found the two sensitive uses, but you did not identify the Diamond House Detox. And your rationale for that is that because you did not see them in the system in terms of having a business operating tax? Is that accurate to say?
Permit.
Permit. Is that accurate to say?
Yeah, permits and certificates. We have lots of documents that are in the city's databases for different purposes. We did not see any city record that indicated that business was located there. What we would typically look for, we did not see that, in a building permit, in a land use entitlement, in a business licensure, as we call a business operating tax certificate here. And in fact, there's, yeah.
Okay. The appellant did mention that she had secured the location before the application was, before the CUP application was in submission. So I'm also curious to know, when a CUP or a cannabis storefront is in the queue, how early are notifications provided to the property owners?
Yeah, so as Robert described, early notice was provided in May of 2022 to the property owner and occupants. That includes residents, if there is a dwelling, or if a business owner occupies a tenant space, they receive a notice card in the mail.
Okay, so just pause real quick. So you said a notification is given to the property owner, and also if there is a tenant in the property.
Correct.
So if, so does that mean that, I'll ask the appellant, so that means that the appellant didn't, was not operating at the time when you sent the notification? Is that accurate?
I can't verify that information.
I'll ask the appellant, thank you. Another question that I have is, have this occurred in our city before? Like, are we aware of other storefronts that have, that are in similar proximity to a treatment facility in our city? Is this the first? Have this occurred before?
So for this, to use an analogy, this is tobacco as a sensitive use, a tobacco retailer, as well as a substance abuse rehab facility. Tobacco retailers have been frequently located next door to a cannabis dispensary. In review of our records and looking at prior decisions, we were able to find two previous, what we would call a legacy cannabis dispensary. So we are going back in time, pre Prop 64, into what we would call the medical marijuana era. There are two facilities in operation. One is Cantinas at 3600 Power Inn Road, which is located in a multi-tenant suite building, very similar to the Diamond House, multi-level. And there is a suite that that dispensary has operated out since 2014, I believe, around that timeframe. And there is an outpatient facility that's located in that building as well. A therapeutic alternative is on H Street, I believe 3015 is the address, and they are located across the street from a Montessori preschool.
So we do have other cannabis storefront that is in close proximity to other treatment facility in previous records? Okay.
We do.
Okay. Are you aware of any issues for these storefronts and the facility in particular, just, and maybe this is a question for Devine, I don't know if she's here, but I'm just curious to know if there's been any issues that have arisen, given that we have example of storefront close to the proximity of other treatment facilities?
None that we're aware of in the planning division. But yeah, like enforcement does occur through the Office of Cannabis Management as well.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Can I ask the appellant, Vicki, to come up? Thanks. Hi, Vicki.
Hi.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Just some questions. So you had mentioned that you opened your business in February 2022. If I heard correctly, staff, when, the notification that went to the tenants, what date was that? And went to the property owner?
May of 2022.
Okay, so that means that your business would have been operating during that time, right? Because I think I recall you saying you were operating in February 2022.
Correct.
2022, okay. So that means that you were already operating, which means the notification already went out. So I'm just also trying to understand the disconnect, because staff is telling me that a letter got sent to the property owner. My first question is, did you receive a notice from your property owner?
I did not.
Okay. Staff, I'm just curious to know, do we require property owners to notify their tenants, or do we just put this on the property owner to do their due diligence and let their tenant know that this is happening?
Both. The property owner on the assessed roll will receive that notice.
Okay.
If you have a tenant suite that has a registered address with the city, you will get a mailing as well.
So you're saying because Diamond House was not registered as a business, they did not receive that letter because we weren't aware of it? Is that accurate?
No, no, I'm not implying that. The mailing, the mailing list is different from a business operating tax list, certificate list.
Okay. So Vicki, I have a question. In the report, or maybe this is for staff, but in the report, as I was reading 300-plus pages, in the report, there were two sensitive uses in the location that actually triggered the CUP for it to go to planning commission. I know that there are two tobacco retailers in close proximity, and Vicki, as you mentioned, there are also nine sensitive uses in the area. So my question to you is that, given that there are other sensitive locations in the area, I want to have a better understanding why you selected this location for Diamond House?
Well, I mean, none of these sensitive uses are directly next to us. I don't, I mean, we're talking about liquor stores and gas stations that are on the outside, you know, a mile away or 600 miles, 600 feet away. So we're not directly looking at those.
Okay.
Need to, please stay. Keep the decor in here, please, and keep the seriousness in here.
Thanks. I asked that question only because I've driven around that area multiple times. I actually had an opportunity to go with my staff to see the site. You had mentioned earlier that also, and I did ask city staff this, because I believe it's also required that we have to put up a sign regarding the CUP. And Vicki, you had mentioned that you didn't see that sign. And so for me, I'm also thinking, I know that there were conditions updated to the CUP. If you weren't able to see those signs, and we're not going to have signs there, I also find it that it might, you know, that it would actually, that many of your clients probably wouldn't see the sign at all, the fact that six months go by and you haven't seen the sign posting. And so I'm just, I'm also curious why you didn't see this. I don't know if it was big enough.
The sign is pretty small, and it's against the road.
Okay.
So yes, I have walked by that storefront, but there's nothing posted even on the retail site, which you would think that there would be, they would have one there. So I have walked by that area, and so when we looked for it, we actually had to walk and then go down the street to see the sign, and it is not very large.
Okay. Could you share with me just some of your largest concerns regarding the storefront, just so that I have a better understanding? So one thing is, I heard you said the advertisement piece, which I believe, according to city staff and the report, there were conditions put on this cannabis storefront to make sure that they didn't have any visible sign. What other concerns do you have?
Does the condition follow the CUP, or does it follow the applicant?
Maybe I'll have staff answer that.
This is a special condition of approval agreed to by the applicant because it restricts the content of the sign. And in this instance, the commission agreed with the recommendation of staff to prohibit the term cannabis or any imagery consistent with cannabis, including its leaves, from any signage for this business that would follow this business for as long as it's in operation through the conditions of approval on the permit.
Okay, so the sign would follow? Okay, so the sign would follow? Okay, thank you. And then Vicki, my last question is, to date, have you had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Young to find a resolution and discuss a path forward?
So I'll speak to, I have a question to city. So again, we're meeting about a land use issue with a conditional use permit to a retail space outside of the applicant being there or not. This will stay there. So does that requirement of marketing follow the conditional use of the land, the actual retail space? Whether or not she's operating there or not, the next operator would have to follow the same marketing requirements?
Yes. Follows the land, not the, not the operator.
And then your second question was meeting with her.
Yeah, have you had a chance to meet with Ms. Young to find a resolution and a path forward?
So in emails, my attorney has, I did respond to her on meeting her, and legal has told me it is not in my best interest to meet with her separately, as this is a city issue and a land use issue that I'm trying to get the city to work with me on, not something that I'm trying to work with her on at this point.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask the applicant, Ms. Young, to come up? Thank you. Ms. Young, thank you so much for your, for one, for being here today and for your thorough presentation. I know the first time when I met you, it was really important for me that you conduct thorough community outreach, you know, really listening to the neighborhood association. And then you have stayed true and committed to that, because I'm definitely hearing from a lot of neighborhood association members and community members regarding the storefront. And so I do just have some questions for you. Your presentation was thorough, but I wanted to ask you, as a core participant, did you, did you receive any support from the core program in securing your location?
So the City of Sacramento's core program, I believe definitely chose the two administrators, Sec Asian and GSUL. But they did not set them up at all for what I'm doing right now. I'm actually very grateful that I, I'm just not familiar with the Asian Chamber of Commerce. I'm very grateful for GSUL because of the business resources that they implemented into that curriculum. I do feel like I did have some advantages, but in regard to this application, from the application process to, yes, finding a location, we did not have that support. We did have some education, right? We had some workshops that were given to us, but after I graduated, I did have to secure my location, my funding, my contracts, my operations team, my HR, my brand on my own.
Okay. Yeah, I just asked that because, I mean, I don't want us to set up our core participants for failure, and so I just wanted to know if you got support from the core program. What you're telling me right now is that you did not receive support in terms of securing the location or after the program?
That is correct.
Is that accurate? Okay, thank you. Another question I had was, once you learned about the existence of Diamond House, and I also hear the appellant of the concerns that she have, I'm curious to know, what changes did you make to the CUP with staff in order to accommodate some of the concern from Diamond House?
Absolutely. So once we found out, myself and city staff, the day before our hearing, I believe we both got to trying to do discovery and vetting after the discussion with the planning staff about the recommendation. And just to give you perspective, one would want someone to know what they're selling at their business, right? And I am going to be one of the only cannabis stores out here that has agreed to not say I'm selling cannabis, not show that I'm selling cannabis. But if that was a concern of the substance abuse center that it would trigger her clients as they're coming out, then I was willing to try to meet in the middle and make sure I remove any visible cues that might trigger them. I can't do anything about fat duck sign, marijuana, I can't do anything about that one, but at least I could show her that I was willing to work with them and that I do care about that very vulnerable community. And I believe there's probably even more that we could do to work together.
Thanks, Ms. Young. I've also asked the appellant this too, but I'm assuming then, have you had the opportunity to meet with Diamond House, reached out to her?
So I have reached out excessively, probably, as I've CC'd city council commissioners, everybody on my attempts in trying to communicate with her. I did receive an email Friday. We did, I asked Thursday for one last chance at a meeting. She did set a meeting with me Friday at 5:00. However, she did cancel that meeting, or she did ask for that meeting to be held off on for the reason she stated earlier was it to be mediated by you guys.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
So Mary, I just have some comments. Definitely want to hear public comments before we decide on a direction on this. You know, for me, the situation just all around is really disappointing, because I see it as it really pitting two women businesses against each other. And, but what is actually more problematic is that I think this scenario in this case really highlights the flaw in our planning system, right? I also would argue a flaw in our core program. You know, I believe we're actually setting up our core members to fail when we don't see their projects through, especially when they have followed all city protocols to get to this moment. And then secondly, on the city code, on the city planning code piece, this case also reveals like really the gap in our planning process. Because right now, the establishment of any new sensitive uses can occur at any time during an application process that does impact the hearing requirement for a cannabis dispensary. I think we heard earlier, you know, staff did their best to do their due diligence. One, they didn't see Diamond House in the system because they didn't have an operation tax until October 22. But even if Diamond House did have a BOT prior to October 22, as a city, we need to ensure that once a dispensary CUP is in the queue, I believe any new established sensitive uses shouldn't really interrupt the process. That's just my belief, and that's probably something we need to look at in terms of our city code. So, you know, one recommendation that I do have is for staff to update our city code on this process. And I think we need to make sure that once a specific date, once, once a CUP is submitted for a cannabis, that we set a specific date that no new sensitive use establishment can really interfere with the process.
Councilmember, can I, Mayor, can I just want to ask you, so I want to follow the point here. How was the, the fact that Diamond, Diamond House was found interrupt the process? In other words, we're here because Diamond House had a right, and has exercised a right to appeal, but what's the interference? In other words, the, the new sensitive use comes forward in the middle of the process, they then become an interested party, and if they want to object, they can object in the way that Ms. Maccabe is, is objecting. But what's, what's, I'm trying to understand what the problem with the process is, because it just happened.
Well, I think in our city code, I mean, Robert also, Robert, can you put up back the PowerPoint, the slide regarding?
Doug, could you pull the PowerPoint back up, please? From the previous presentation?
Mary, because my understanding is that, like, right now, the establishment of any sensitive uses can occur at any time during an application process.
Wait, this, okay.
That impacts the hearing, that impacts the hearing requirement for cannabis dispensary. That's my understanding.
I see, you're saying that hearing is required if there's an additional sensitive use that's brought forward. What, what was the additional process issue that, do you understand the question?
Well, we already had this going to Planning and Design Commission because of tobacco.
It was going to go anyways.
We, we, we found that out early in the process, and, and we, it was going to go anyway. The difference was, is we didn't know about the substance abuse center until the day before the October 13 hearing.
Right, then.
And when we had that hearing, we didn't have anything talked about, and then we continued again and talked about it. We didn't under, we didn't have.
That's what I'm trying to ask, Council, Mayor Procthem, is just how it changes the process, because there were already sensitive uses, the hearing process was going to be invoked, how does it change it? That's what I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, because my understanding is that, that's fine. I, right now, what I understand is that right now, the establishment of a sensitive use can occur at any time during the application process, is that accurate, right?
Right.
Okay, and we allow that in the city, even though it impacts our, our local businesses. I'm just stating that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go, you want to explain?
No, I just want to say that I think, like, essentially what Councilmember Vang is saying, that the context changed after the application was submitted.
Okay.
So the applicant submitted, knowing a certain number of uses, and was working through the process, and then the context changed after they started there.
Okay, now, that, that helps. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember.
No, no, no. Why it's a conversation, because I just want to understand it. Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's the first piece, I think. I mean, I definitely want to hear from the public what they have to say, but I think we definitely need to update our city code and figure out the context piece. The other piece I wanted to share was that, you know, Ms. Young mentioned that she made changes to the CUP to accommodate and address concerns. Something that I just want to bring up to my colleagues and, you know, my colleagues as well as policymakers, is that I find it concerning that our city does not have any policy around other legal substance use, such as tobacco and alcohol. We are putting conditions on the cannabis industry, which I'm not opposed to, but I believe that the same conditions and policies should be applied to all legal substance use. And I say that because I've, and I've already requested this for our city log, that I, and I want to reassure that I reaffirm this again, because I do believe that this council needs to put forth really an ordinance and a policy around this. I drive down Mediview and Valley High, and I see tobacco and alcohol signs in our neighborhoods. And we should be concerned about this, right? We should be applying the same standards to all legal substance. These industries don't need ads to make money, right? And so this is, you know, a similar topic, but I know, I'm just bringing this up again because I have requested for this, and it's on the city log, and want to make sure that this is, you know, a priority for the city, that we need to apply the same standards to other legal substance. That includes tobacco and alcohol. And so I just wanted to reiterate that. But I do want to have a moment to hear from my colleagues, hear from city staff before we, uh, hear from my colleagues, hear from the public before we move over, before we move on. But I do want to ask Vicki and Lacretia, can you both come up really quick? Thank you. We're going to get an opportunity to hear from my colleagues, because I see them in the queue. We're also going to get an opportunity to hear from the public. You know, one of my recommendations is that, before we take an official vote tonight, I actually would prefer both parties to meet with both mayor and I to figure out what a path forward can be. Definitely want to hear from the public and my colleagues, so that's, that's an option I would like to offer. You both can choose not to do that, and we can take the vote tonight, which I'm happy to do as well, but want to offer that to both of you publicly, to see if you both be willing to sit down to have a conversation about what a path would be moving forward.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll answer that first. I am going to be very available and open to speak with Vicki for any type of resolve. However, we did do what we were supposed to do to get here. We have invested over $200,000 and counting. Every month that we click buy, it's $9,000. Even from this appeal till now, that's $40,000 that we have now further accumulated. I received a $125,000 core business grant for an empty building. Now this here, what we're here for, as the applicant, who has done their job as the applicant and done what the City of Sacramento asks to do, I am going to respectfully ask that you do vote tonight. And if you would be willing to, I do, would, would definitely like to talk to Vicki about how we can move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all.
Thank you very much.
I'm a little confused, was that a yes to mediation?
No.
That was not a yes, okay.
That was a request for a vote tonight.
I'm okay with mediation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Great, great, great questions, by the way. I've been really, I think, cut right to it, so thank you so much. Councilmember Maple?
Great, thank you. And I actually have a few more questions for the applicant, Ms. Young. Thank you. So you answered one of them already. One of the questions that I had was, how much have you spent to date? So it sounds like that's 200,000, you know, ballpark, right?
Ballpark, yeah.
Okay, great. And more every day. And, and the reason why I ask that is, for those who don't know, I used to work in the industry, and I can tell you firsthand, it used to be my job to do exactly what you're doing right now. And it's incredibly difficult job. And I would say, based on what I've heard tonight, that you've really gone above and beyond. When I'm seeing support letters from neighborhood associations, that doesn't happen. You know, I've been, I've seen this in a lot of other cities, and usually they stay neutral, if not opposed. So it's, I think it says a lot that you got your neighborhood associations on board. The other thing that was really telling to me was that you had other dispensaries writing in support of you. That does not happen. And that says a lot, I think, about the work that you've done in outreach. So I just want to uplift that and say, you know, seeing two other competitors write in, in support is, I think that says a lot. And so I also wanted to learn a little bit more about the timeline. So I know you talked about entering into the program, but can you just give a little bit more detail? How much time have you spent since you decided, yes, I'm interested in embarking on this path to open a dispensary?
Yes. Okay, so again, I think we found out about the orientation days before. I immediately went into the work of gathering information, the classification that I qualified for meant that I had to find five years of information about myself in order to apply. I also had to build a business plan before I even got there, in order to show them that I was ready to be a part of this industry and in this program. We did, we went to classes every day, and when it came into the pandemic, we went through Zoom. And in addition to the curriculum and the course, we also prepared for a shark tank, right? So that means we additionally build our business plans, our pitch decks, and we learned and stood in front of some of, some of you, maybe, at the Greater Sacramento Urban League in order to pitch so that we could get ahead of the financial burden that was getting ready to be put in front of us for this particular industry. That also meant, of course, not just through that financial space, but we had to continue to speak and talk to and negotiate and look for funding, and not, not just from a place of knowing. I, I really need to express how much we did not know what we were doing. This is a very new industry, this is a very new opportunity. We are all, especially us, learning the cannabis industry, financials, real estate, all of this stuff from scratch. And that's why I do give credit to GSUL, because of the workshops that they provided for us to kind of give us that standing. But we did have to learn in a very short period of time, things that a lot of other people, since, what, 2000, 1996, actually, have already been in the cannabis industry and moving around. After that, in regard to the little bit over a month that we had to prepare in order to actually get one of the lotteries to be here right now, we did have to prepare, we had to consult, we had to get together as cohorts and work together to get to this point. This is not a every now and then type of thing, and this is also not the only thing that we do. All of us had jobs, some of us had jobs and school, all of us have families. So this was an additional industry that we had to learn from scratch and then execute from scratch in core, in order for me to even be here. That goes for the $125,000 core grant, same thing. The opportunity came up like that, but we had to kind of move forward, otherwise we were not going to have any type of funding to secure this location. Went to an empty building, but I am appreciative of it.
Well, thank you. So it sounds like multiple years and hundreds of thousands of dollars at this point, and that, that checks out with my experience as well. It's really a challenging industry to get into, and not to mention just challenges in accessing capital as well. So it sounds like you've had to go through that difficult path. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about, I know that the, the city, and we're not the only city in the state, by the way, that has this challenge, but we, along with others, have a very, I would say fairly restrictive zoning and sensitive use requirements for where these facilities can go, and that was based on years and years of policymaking around wanting to ensure that these are in good places for the community. So if you could talk a little bit about what the process of actually finding this building and what that was like?
Yes, so this is probably the, maybe seventh, eighth building that we had looked at seriously. We scouted and started looking for buildings in my cohort class. We sat down and we went to LoopNet. We actually started looking for locations before the RFQ even came out. Then when it came out, it wasn't us that found the locations. There were a lot of people that were already in the industry, already in real estate, there were cannabis real estate people, and they're the ones who actually approached many of us to help us find a location. Our ice cream that I mentioned earlier, we actually do rent that location from the same property management that the substance abuse center rents from. And that's how, uh, we were able to view their actual unit now before they got there because that was offered to us as a location and we declined because of just not knowing what was going to happen with the medical industry. And we don't have the time to figure that out. We have three years to open. And so the com- one of the companies that I was thinking about going through, um, had access to this location. I am from South Sacramento. I had another partner who was in the cohort who actually introduced me to this company. So we had some synergy and that's how I ended up with that location.
Great, thank you. And I, and I just want to say for the record too, when it comes like from the business perspective, when you're going through this process, when you look at a map of Sacramento and then you layer on the zones and then you layer on the sensitive uses and you're using Google and you're doing all this stuff, you find that there are very few properties, um, that fit within the constraints, um, that are set out in our code. Um, that makes it really challenging for business and so I, it's hard. Uh, and I know that and I know it takes time and money. So I just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to say that.
Thank you.
And then just generally speaking, I want to say that, you know, we as a city, you know, we recently passed Measure All. Uh, and we talk about creating funds for youth programs in our city, um, using cannabis tax dollars, right? So these are funds that we set aside. I think that we have an interest as a city to make sure that the industry also does well. We also did another thing. We created the core program. And that was with our acknowledgement that many people have been harmed by the war on drugs, are not able to currently participate in the industry. That was what we said. That's what we laid out. That's what the program is set to do. And so I think we do have a responsibility to help our core applicants be successful. And when, you know, I'm seeing someone who did everything, um, within their power, followed all the rules, um, and really went out of their way to, um, put forth a great application. So I just wanted to say that and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Vice Mayor Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. First, uh, you know, a couple of questions here, um, for staff. Who has the, who, who has the burden of proof here to identify when a sensitive use comes up? And because this, this, uh, I think lies in the crux of, of the issue. Is it an applicant? Is it a potential neighbor? Is it the city? Who, who has this, uh, uh, responsibility? And I also bring up this because I, I would love you to be free in opining, um, as a zoning administrator because we have a situation here where you had a real estate entity that was basically shopping both spaces here. But the notification is important because of the sensitive use requirement.
I would describe it as a shared burden, if you want to describe it as that. As I mentioned, an applicant has a requirement to submit an application that includes certain information. And we have prescribed that information, uh, one of those requirements to be a sensitive radius map. So, uh, having a vested interest in, in, uh, that application and its journey, uh, they take that first burden upon themselves to do their due diligence, assessing the risk and gathering information and, and code compliance. But ultimately, it's your staff. Our job is to apply the city code that you have established as a council and ensure that we are applying it in an accurate manner and enabling you to make the best decision possible.
Appreciate that. Now, um, maybe, and this may be a, a question also for the, for the appellant, but walk me through again this, the course of events here in the notification process. Because what I heard was that an application was submitted in April of 2022. And then, um, in May, you, you notified the property owners and it wasn't until October you had a hearing and then November you had a hearing. But in between then, it seems to me that there, there was ample time for the city to notify or for the parties to understand their current si- situation. Can you please walk me through that?
Kevin, before you answer that, Vice Mayor, I want to ask Robert to pull up that slide that, uh, Mayor Protam asked for because I think it provides clarity on how it got pushed off. And back to PDC.
Well, good. And I appreciate that. And then I, I want to, I want the app, the appellant to clarify a comment that was made. Thank you, madam, Mayor Protam.
Which, which slide were we referring to though?
It's the time, the schedule of the timeline.
That's the hearing background.
That's the hearing.
You can back up earlier in the slide.
That's, that's the hearings background, but I have the notification.
Yeah, go back to the notification dates.
There it is.
There it is.
May 6th was when we sent out the early notice and posted the site.
So let me, see then, let me ask the applicant. You mentioned that you submitted an application and notified the city in April of 2022. That, is that what you testified to?
I'm sorry?
That you submitted, I have, I have, I made a note here that, uh, you stated that you, you submitted an application to the city in April of 2022.
No, I, I.
No, I'm asking the appellant.
An application for?
You said you had notified the city in April of 2022 and then you found out in October that a core applicant had filed. Is that correct?
No, I only found out in that, um, I believe November hearing. And I want to say it was the day before. Or sorry, was it October?
October 13th hearing, the day before that.
I heard that, I found out the day before.
Right, I understand that. But now, and, and maybe this is where I, I need some clarification. You just said you had made contact with the city in April. What, what did you mean by that? In April of 2022?
I didn't say that in this, I said that her application was approved in April.
Your application? For, for, by the state or by the, because my, what I heard here, and maybe.
So our, um, joint commission was approved in March.
I see, okay.
And then our Department of Health was approved, um, in November.
Okay. And so then, maybe this is a question for the city. Is there any way for the city to have known that the state had already been acting on a location or a center? And how do we communicate in that, in that manner?
There's, there's not a, a formal consultation required by any law that I'm aware of. The appellant had referenced, uh, I believe a zoning verification form in this instance. Since I was requested to review and sign a form that the State Department of Health Services requires applicants to verify that the zoning would allow for that use to occur or not. But that, that wouldn't be initiated by city staff. That would be the, the rehab facility operators' state permit process that they would be bearing that burden.
But there's no, uh, interaction between the city at that point because of the land use designation?
There's not.
Thank you. So one, one comment here, um, for the city manager to take note is finding out, uh, what is, uh, and again, not, not for discussion here, this is a de novo hearing on this case. But what is, where is that, where is that gap in the notification process?
And also to find out if there's an ability for us to coordinate with the state to get notification. I think that's, that's really where the piece is. And whether or not they will do that, we will.
Sure. No, I, I understand that. I understand. Um, and, and I only have one, uh, I mean, I have a lot of comments that I'll wait till after the public comment here, but I only have one, um, you know, uh, you know, question, again, last question, uh, for, uh, you know, for both, I think the same question that Councilmember, Mayor Protam Vang asked, for the applicant and the appellant here both. So if, uh, you know, Lacretia, and, uh, if you don't mind coming up again. Are you, are, I've heard one applicant say they're willing to sit down and mediate and come back to this council. And I've heard that you said you're willing to, but you, you're not willing to, that you want to vote. It's either yes or no. Are you willing to, to sit down and then come back to this council to mediate? Even if it's agreed upon mediator?
Say that one more time. Am I willing to?
Are you willing to sit down and mediate with the, the, uh, the appellant here on an outcome?
So I guess my, my clarification.
There's either yes or no.
Oh, I, I need to, I need some clarification on what you're asking now.
Do you want to sit down and mediate?
Just, just, I, I, I don't want to confuse it because she had already asked and answered that when it was brought up by, by Councilmember Vang.
It can be re-asked though by another member. It's okay. I mean.
Because what I heard here, what I heard here is that you would, but then she went on and said that you wanted approved tonight. So that's.
I heard, can I tell you what I heard? Or do you want to, you want me to interpret what I heard or you want?
I'd like to hear her say it.
Go ahead.
I mean, both of you. I mean, I, uh, this is a situation where we have two, two uses. And I think how Councilmember Vang identified it, two small business owners. And I think if we, if there's an opportunity to mediate and resolve this mutually, that should be explored.
Point of order?
Point of order.
Um, for the city attorney, is this something that can actually be done, that we postpone the hearing in lieu of mediation?
Can the parties agree to continue the hearing and have some kind of mediation? Yes, absolutely. Is your question whether or not the council members can be the mediators?
I've been given conflicting conversations today. I had a current, different conversation with the mayor that I had with my council member today. And so in answering that question, I'm, I, and that's why I need clarification because what you're asking isn't what I was told I was allowed to do, I guess is what I'm saying. I, I, I believe that I was allowed to ask for this to happen and also the mediation. I'm not declining the mediation, so I'm asking, are you saying I can't have the mediation?
Very good. Okay, yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, I know, I, I would love to have a mediation, but I do believe that we should have this, this vote. Yes, correct. And then I would be more than, I am more than open to have that mediation moving forward because we will be business makers.
So then, okay, so here's where, where I, I disagree, Mr. Mayor. I think that, that, that if, and what I heard from the city attorney is that there's nothing that precludes if the applicant and the appellant wish to mediate together before this council takes an action, that they do so. Now, what I, what I, I heard is that, you know, you won't vote on the CUP and then they can mediate whatever conditions afterwards.
That's right.
And I, and because, because the CUP goes with the life of the property, I mean, that's an important factor. I think that mediation should happen before the council votes on it. Because it's a, um, unless they, unless there's no construction that's built and you, you use it for timeframe. It's a very long lasting impact. So that's my point. And now, if you're not comfortable answering that now and wish to answer it after the public comment, I, I'm glad to give you that. But to me, I've always felt that it's better for the appellant and the applicant to find, uh, a mediation before, you know, the hearing body takes an action.
I agree.
Okay, so I just want to put this into some context here because you, that's, the question's been properly asked. And look, it, a vote tonight, and this is quasi adjudicatory, but I'm telling you, I'm impressed with the, with the quality of this hearing, the questions that are asked, the depth, all of it. Nobody's made up their mind yet, but the council will vote. And if we vote, somebody will win and somebody will lose. That's the way that it is, okay? And so, bless you. The question, sneeze to the truth. The, so the question for both of you, and I guess, you know, to read minds, to read, uh, to, to, um, determine and what risk you're willing to take, the alternative, and it's your choice. And I said that to you today.
You did.
It's your choice, um, whether or not you want to delay a vote and to, uh, and to have a mediation with the possibility of, quote, working something out. And by the way, workout could mean many things, right? Your choice and it's okay. There's no pressure. Uh, it's, but there comes a risk with an up or down vote. And you're listening to different council members and this is what we do up here, right? We're, and in this instance, we're like a court. We're a quasi adjudicatory body. You know, Supreme Court has nine members. We're not quite the Supreme Court, but we, we get a, but we, but we get to vote on whether or not to approve the, um, conditional use permit, approve or deny the appeal. So that's all. It's an assessment for you and to do whatever you, choose whatever you want. We talked about this today and it's the same, it's the same thing. But that's what it is, uh, Mayor, Mayor. And you, and so you just had one council member, the vice mayor, uh, just express his point of view. Just as Councilmember Maple asked a, a number of questions and made comments, Councilmember Vang did the same. So whatever you choose. And I know we've got others. Councilmember Valenzuela, go ahead.
Thank you. My questions are just for the applicant, if that's okay, if you want to sit down for a moment. How much does it cost you per month, um, right now while you're waiting on the CUP?
Okay, so, and I did submit, um, the lease for, when I got my core grant, um, including net fees. We are over $9,000 per month.
Per month.
And keep in mind, the longer I go through this process, I am not just paying rent, I am paying staff. I am paying resources. I am paying for financial and consultants. And, and, and so it's not just the rent. It actually is a, a undue hardship in this, uh, situation.
If you had to ballpark it, what would be the total amount you're out every month that you're waiting on the CUP?
14.
$14,000 a month?
14.
And planners, I know it's up on the screen, but can you tell me how many months it's been since her original hearing was scheduled that she's been waiting?
We're over a year at this point.
Okay. And you said that you're over 200K right now into this process and the core grant was only for 125K?
That's correct. And that covered permitting fees. It covered permitting fees of, uh, 13 plus thousand, uh, rent for only nine months at 76,000. And it would have covered build out, which again, we're now kind of moving build out fees around from this situation. And so that was the other 36,000 that it was. But to your point, it, it went to emptiness. It went to not operating. It went to not generating revenue, which is another reason why I'm so firm in, in not waiting any longer because perhaps I would get some assistance, but I'm not open. I'm not generating revenue right now, so I am going into debt. My co- uh, fellow cohorts, we are working together to make this happen.
Yeah, and if I count just from when your first hearing would have happened and you might have gotten your CUP, that's been six months. So that's well over $80,000 that you're already into this process. Just for the appellate process. And I say this because I think that's really important because I know Councilmember Maple just talked about the barriers and the feasibility. Cannabis businesses can't get loans. Cannabis businesses can't get credit cards. Cannabis businesses aren't like other businesses where they can go and say, hey dude, I, I need some help. And they'll be like, okay, bank, we'll, we'll help you out. Like you're floating this right now to the tune of, of many, many thousands of dollars. And to make super clear, to put a super fine point on the questions, um, city planning staff, the city got nothing about there being a potential recovery center. We had no BOT was filed, which is required to operate a business. Nothing was filed with us until after the applicant was already start, initiated her process for the CUP, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I say all of this because I think the policy discussion we're having right now is super important. And I want us to keep that. I mean, it's important. This is obviously a really bad situation and none of us like being put in this situation, much less, I'm sure, the appellant and the applicant. But, you know, I don't want the policy issues to muddy up like the, the raw facts here. We have somebody who did exactly what we asked her to do, who has followed the process to a T, who has gone above and beyond what was required of her and who is currently sitting on a payment of 15,000, $14,000 a month to keep talking about something that could have been resolved six months ago when people figured out that there was a problem. You know, I have a lot of dispensaries in my district and what I have found is that they can be very good neighbors if they are given the chance to be a very good neighbor. So, sorry, I'm editorializing now. I will stop that. My, that is it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to get to the public testimony as quickly as possible. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question. Within this shopping center, it's my understanding that there's two additional beer and wine stores? Or are they liquor stores? Ms. Young?
We're, we are next duh, we are next door to Fat Duck's Pizza, um, whose sign says Fat Ducks Pizza Beer Wine Sandwiches. It's next door to me and closer to the actual substance abuse center. It's actually what you see when you drive into our driveway into our shopping center. You see Fat Ducks Beer Wine right there. And then, um, this, the liquor stores and smoke shops are across the street. And then, um, we have like wine, um, maybe at, uh, Big Lots in the shopping center, stuff like that.
Did the same drive, drive-in that, you know, we pass through, pass, uh, along the Diamond House Detox and then we see your shop or it's two separate in- entrance into that center?
So their Diamond House sits on the corner and there's two entrances into Diamond House. This entrance right here is where Fat Ducks is and then my store is right next to Fat Ducks.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, I, I do agree with my colleague, Councilmember Maple. I think this is an industry that, number one, you know, as, as council members, we have to listen to our constituents and see what they ask or what the needs are and, and kind of go along with them. But I know that, especially when. But I know that, especially when it comes to the core applicants, we still have a lot of work that needs to be done. I know Law &amp; Ledge has been working on it for about a year and a half now. But, you know, this is a situation that I think it can be worked. I can see the detox facility with your facility in the same center. I'm more worried about opioid prescriptions given to individuals than cannabis. Now, with that said, you know, I've also objected to some cannabis licenses in my district, but I'm following what my constituents want. So regarding this, as my colleagues have indicated, I think you've done everything from A to Z and beyond. And the fact that, again, hopefully we get the system up to date, the fact that you have to go into a store and unknowingly spend $200,000 thinking this is mine, and then we coming and knocking on your door going, guess what, this might not be happening, well, that's not fair, you know? So I'm glad that the two tenants want to talk and mediate this, but at the same time, I feel very strongly that, you know, to have your facility there next to the Diamond House Detox should not create a major issue, considering there's a liquor store right there, there's multiple smoke shops there. So that's all I want to say. And I, as a core member, I myself, I owe you an apology for not getting the system more up and running, so you guys don't have to spend so much money out of your pocket for two or three years before you get a site. So that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let's now hear from the public. All right. How many speakers do we have, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I have 25 speakers signed up to speak. The first one is Andrew Miller, Steve Sujin, Dr. Kevin Cameron. Please feel free to line up in the aisle.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members, for your time today. My name is Andrew Miller. I was a patient of Diamond House Detox late last year, and I can confidently say that this facility helped save my life. I'm embarrassed to say this is my first city council meeting in the 40 years that I've lived and worked here in Sacramento. I find now in sobriety that it's important and an honor to be able to be a part of society as a contributing member, as I think both business owners here are wishing to do as well. Unfortunately, they probably won't have as good of a time doing that or as beneficial of a time if they do it next to each other. I've learned a lot tonight, and I've taken a lot of notes. I had a friend who did start to smoke weed after he got well, and it did lead him to going to use cocaine. And he did die from a fentanyl overdose recently. And that's probably rare, you know? That is probably rare. I have a weed shop behind my house, and my wife and I are a little afraid that I might go there once in a while. I might do it, and I might be okay, but it does happen. And just putting this as a temptation doesn't seem fair to anybody. It is a tough decision you all have to make, and I urge you to do not only what's best for each individual business owner, who's obviously worked very hard to get where they're at, and they deserve the best, but who deserves the best as well? Are these brave souls fighting for their addiction, fighting for their lives? I don't know what the right thing to do is, and I don't know how to make it work for everybody, but I'm sure you guys can find a way. And please just consider your community as a whole when you're making this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Steve Sujin, then Kevin Cameron.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Dr. Steve Sujin. I'm the medical director of Diamond House Recovery. When we look at individual studies, you can find a whole bunch of individual studies that'll say one thing or another thing, depending upon which study you want to look at. When we try to look at multiple reviews, it gives us a better idea of what a whole, the body of literature says. And right now, the body of literature is still weak on what is cannabis and what it has to say. One of the best examples of this is when we, one of the clearest examples is the state of Colorado that has been dealing with this longer than the state of Colorado. They had a task force that was appointed by their governor. I just want to summarize four points that their task force came up with. The people who benefited the most from cannabis were the business owners. There was a general consensus that with cannabis, that it was dangerous and addictive, that they had increased substance use, it made worsening mental health, and impaired driving. There is a follow-up study by the faculty of the University of Colorado, which, again, had been operating in this population, and their consensus was that as cannabis is constantly changing, that the concentration of cannabis is different than what has previously been studied. And there is not a consensus of cannabis of lower concentrations to what is cannabis of higher concentrations. But their studies showed that it had increased psychosis or mental health, and there was increased suicidal behavior. And it should be noticed that in Sacramento, that the county here in Sacramento, according to a study, that just came out last week, that it had, that the suicide rates were higher in Sacramento than in the state average. And so I just want to put this forward, that it is a hard decision that you all have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before we get to the next witness, I just want to say there are probably a number of people in the audience and maybe waiting for item 15, which is the overview of the city's pro-housing designation. Given the number of public speakers and the length of this, I'd like to push that item to March 7th, please, and apologies to the staff that have waited for the entire evening. I'm very sorry. But I just think that that's probably best, because by the time we finish this, we want to give full attention and energy to the housing issues. Is that all right, everyone? So we'll deem that. We'll continue it formally, I guess, after this item, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Cameron, then Tito Magavet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I do not envy your guys' decisions tonight. But my name is Dr. Kevin Cameron, a clinical psychologist, combat-disabled vet, and the CEO of Anchor Therapy Clinic here in Sacramento. I'm speaking in opposition of the dispensary based on a couple of things. One, current city policy, as well as the community mental health. Most people don't understand, and I'm going to give you a little insight to the decision you guys are going to make tonight. Substance use for cynicism is impacted by three major things: the biopsychosocial history of an individual, their age, and their geographical environment to availability of the substance. Recent studies that are specifically annotated in Sac County Mental Health Social Services identifies that 40% in Sacramento is recidivism rate, or an estimated 40% of people in Sacramento are suffering with substance use disorders right now. Out of that, there's a 73% recidivism rate. 74% of those are minorities. 46 are disabled vets. 51% are specifically marijuana-related. Now, I'm not here advocating against entrepreneurship. I'm the founder of Anchor Therapy Clinic, and I know how hard it is to start a business, especially here in Sacramento. I'm advocating for our community, those in our community struggling with mental health and substance use disorders specifically, and our disabled vets, just simply by not placing a dispensary so close to a mental health facility, which is currently outlined in city, in the city code, that requires a 600-foot boundary. An approval of this dispensary within 200 feet not only puts it right next to a substance use facility, but right next across the street from Kaiser. Basically putting a dispensary, setting precedence to put a dispensary right next to schools in the future. Something to think about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Tito Magavet, and then Lisandra Inman.
Hello, Mayor, and district managers and members here. My name is Tito Magavet. I am a co-founder, co-owner of Diamond House. I'm a veteran. I am, my wife and I are both first generation here in the U.S. We totally feel for minority-owned businesses. We are one as well, and I thank you guys for everything that you guys have done to get to this point. I just want to read real quick an article that was published by the Sacramento County in September of 2021. According to the Centers for Disease Control, there are 107,622 overdose deaths nationwide in 2021, the highest annual death toll in record from drug overdose fatalities, and a 15% increase from the previous year. 106 people, your constituents, died last year of overdose, drug overdose. We're in the trenches every day to save lives. This is what we're trying to do, and I just pray that there is a solution that we could come together with. I am not against small business. I am not against marijuana. We know by speaking with our clients on a day-to-day basis that having a dispensary right in front of them, coming in and coming out, could be detrimental to their recovery. And I just hope that we, the decision that is made today is one that is thought of very deeply, because the impact can be significant. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Lisandra Inman, and then Mike Mosley.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed city council members. I just want to address that Lucretia has actually tried to mediate the situation for six months, since this came to light. So for, to ask her to do that again tonight is a bit unfair. I stand before you, not only as a concerned community member, but also as a core graduate whose business is stalled in the process, and an orphaned drug baby who makes a use, who makes a choice every single day not to use. I grew up as a foster child, an orphaned foster child here in Sacramento County, who lost both parents to drug addiction and the war on drugs, noting that neither parent was addicted to cannabis. I stand here as a full, in full support of Culture, the core woman minority-owned retail cannabis storefront that's currently facing opposition. I'm here to urge you to approve their application and support the creations of more equitable opportunities in the cannabis industry. Culture's team has worked tirelessly to meet all regulatory requirements and to address concerns raised by the community. They have held public outreach events, answered questions, been interviewed by several media outlets, and provided detailed plans for security, waste management, and community engagement. Furthermore, they've pledged to allocate a portion of their proceeds towards social equity programs to help underserved communities that have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs. It's essential to note that Culture's appeal is not only about a competing cannabis business, but also their business affiliate and appellant, who is the nearby rehab facility that moved in next to them several months after Culture secured their lease and started their application process. The rehab facility moved in and has been publicly recorded, admitting that they did not research the area, the existing nor proposed businesses of this location, and further clarified their primary concern was being closer to their contractor, Kaiser Permanente, no matter what businesses were around. You can go back and listen to the previous planning commission recordings for this evidence yourself. All in all, there's a lot of evidence that promotes the approval of this business and the denial of the application.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Mosley, then Deontay Young.
Hi, council members, Mayor. My name is Mike Mosley. I've been a long-term resident here in Sacramento, business owner. We have the ice cream shop on El Camino. We just did the thing over in the Kings Stadium. I actually have a recording studio in your district, Sean, that I'm going to be moving from pretty soon. But, this is too much going on. I'll talk to you later on that. Yeah, we talked, so, yeah, this is a very well orchestrated, you guys, I feel like you guys are being bamboozled on the back end. This is a very well orchestrated coup to try and stop us from continuing, most of, a lot of hurdles we already have. We feel like there may be a dispensary involved with Diamond House. If Diamond House is just thrilled to bring these guys that aren't from the community to come and testify about drugs, true enough, there is a problem with the drugs, but it's not us. You know what I mean? It's not, it's a bigger issue. And it's by us being next door to them, isn't going to make them relapse, when you have to look at Fat Duck's before you even see a dispensary that looks like iPhone Store. So I don't really, it's disingenuous, and it really feels kind of suspect that Embark has been playing, due to one of the council members stating on record that Embark had approached them to see if the other council could give a no vote. So it's just a lot of backend stuff, so Diamond House can seem holier-than-thou on one hand, but it's so orchestrated how they have everything going. Why did they orchestrate and realize that there was a dispensary being put next to them? And like Lucretia says, our current landlords at the ice cream shop, we toured that facilities April, before they even moved in there. Nobody in sight, you know what I mean? So, I mean, support of this thing. Can't wait to give you guys some ice cream.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Deontay Young, then Anthony Byers, then Richard Miller.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I wanted first and foremost, thank you for hearing us out tonight. A lot of my points had already been spoken upon, so I'm going to kind of address, you know, a little more personal insight to our household over the last year plus. As you know, my wife has MS. The added stress, the ups and downs, the late nights. Man, I wake up 2:00 in the morning and she's researching. If you know my wife, you know she don't have cut. She do her research and she presents well. I just want to take a moment to tell your wife that I love and appreciate you, our team, the effort that we put in, put forth. The fact that we did, we've done everything acts of us in order to, you know, even be here today. You know, my kids is right here. This is our chance, finally, to have a part in this. You know, it's not really just solely about profits. Again, we were a family that care about people. We're here to help people. South Sac is where we're from. Like my wife said, we had all four of our kids right across the street. We have vested interest in our community. I'm just hoping, you know, we're able to make history tonight, you know, during this Black History Month. And I'm hoping that we get that, yes, approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Anthony Byers, then Richard Miller.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Anthony Byers. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. Some of the things that I heard tonight kind of didn't make sense to me, because I have a lot of friends, including myself, you know, PTSD and stuff like that. So I can attest that, you know, we need cannabis for a whole, a lot of reasons, but mental health, I mean, it isn't always, you know, cannabis that's going to hurt you. A lot of my friends use it, and it helps their PTSD. It doesn't hurt their PTSD. It's the opiates and all the other stuff, the counterdrugs that are killing everybody around here. And I don't think this is a gateway drug for anybody. And when we're talking about the core program, my older brother is also in the core program. That's how I met these good folks over here, and why I'm standing up here talking for them, is because me and my brother, we've been through all the same things and struggles on just trying to open up, paying all this money into a building you don't even get to see. And then, you know, my brother's $175,000 in right now, and it's been over a year and a half, and he still isn't opening up either, and we're hoping to get open up by next month. And luckily, we ain't had to go through what they going through right now, with someone just, you know, not wanting to work with them. So I just ask you guys, you know, can do a vote tonight, because I don't think, they don't even have enough time left before the core program, they won't even accept them. I mean, it's already hard enough to even be a part of it, as well as the state in it. And there's already a lot of court members that's already left the program or went out of state, because they ain't even making money. You talking about, they making so much money in this cannabis? They ain't making money in California. It's going to, I mean, everybody's trying to line their pockets, you know, so it ain't really, these guys ain't going to get rich overnight. It's going to take some time for that. But, you know, they will obviously put in their time to give something to their kids, and that's why they're here. So I ask if you guys can give them approval tonight, because they running out of time, whether it's behind the doors or right in front of everybody.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. The next speaker is Richard Miller, then Jovante Shaw.
Good evening, Richard Miller. I am a concerned citizen that had played part in discussing with this board over the last 15 years for medical cannabis. From the onset in 2008, we were asking for equity applicants. We have never had an African-American dispensary in this facility, speaking and being able to be awarded a conditional use permit or a dispensary in this town. My concerns with this is, moving forward, the intention of the core program was to get those equity applicants available and to be able to obtain a license. We have not been able to do that. It is quite difficult to It is quite difficult and expensive, as I have played a part in many application processes. And I can tell you, it's an upwards of $250,000 to $300,000 to even get to this point to get an application. Denial of this applicant tonight would set her back a half a million dollars. That is not what we intended for this core program. We intended to move this forward in a positive direction, and I do not see that happening unless you vote in support of this tonight. I know that cannabis is beneficial for the harm reduction of opioid abuse. I have worked with literally tens of thousands of patients over the last 30 years. I've seen it happen. I think the two programs can work conjunctive together and beneficial. I think the applicant has taken necessary steps to prove her good faith effort and letting everybody in the community know. And I don't think that the appellate has taken the due diligence to search this out because I know the city officials are aware of this applicant. I know that there has been outreach, and I know the planning commission has approved the conditional permit to move forward. I also know that there's been several articles that have been written in the Sacramento Bee about this applicant. So I don't think the appellate did their due diligence.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
I ask that you move forward.
Thank you for your comments. Jovante Shaw, then Jasmine Tibbetts, then Matthew Palmer.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jovante. I'm one of the nurses from Diamond House. I do want to give a little background and say prior, before working at Diamond House, I did work in the cannabis industry. I worked at Golden Health and Wellness for three years. I worked there when it was medical and the transition into recreational. And I can say, like, the fear that I have personally for my clients is what it brought to the parking lot and to the area. I feel like our location is very low-key. It is very easy to buy a dispensary and smoke in our parking lot right around the corner from it. And it's just, you know, like, the smell, it's triggering. Like, you know, you can't deny that the smell will be there. Like, when packages come in, like, you smell everything. There is a scent. Like, it is different from alcohol. And I think that, and like, it's... I just really worry for them. Like, you know, like, I'm not against cannabis. I am not against Lucretia. I'm all for a black-owned business. I am African-American myself. But it's just addiction is taken lightly. And like, you know, like, and I didn't understand prior to working here what even marijuana does to some people. And although there is many benefits, as to like fentanyl, for example, you know, in birth, they give it to people, they're giving birth. But it's like at an uncontrolled rate, you don't know what someone does once you receive the product. You don't know what's to come with it. Like, I've talked to some of my clients, and they're worried. They come in for treatment for marijuana, and then to have that in a parking lot and right around, and the back parking lot where their entrance to get the product would be in the same area as our place. So I do want to thank you for hearing me out, and we guys make a good decision.
We want to thank you for coming. Okay? Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Jasmine Tibbetts, then Matthew Palmer.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Several years ago, I was extremely sick with an undiagnosed brain tumor. During my long search for a diagnosis, I was informed by my doctor that traditional anti-nausea drugs were not safe for me. And I soon gratefully discovered that medical marijuana allevied my severe nausea. Despite living at that time in a county that does not allow brick-and-mortar dispensaries, I had ample access to my needed medication by means of delivery or by traveling to a dispensary in an adjacent county. In Sacramento County, there is no shortage of access to legal cannabis. There is, however, a shortage of safe places to recover from addiction. Due to my brain cancer complications, it was especially difficult to find a treatment center. I am so grateful to have been accepted at Diamond House, where I've been a client for nearly six months while maintaining sobriety. The applicant has repeatedly referred to the discovery of Diamond House Rehabilitation Center, and I truly appreciate her efforts to modify her business plans at that point. However, this may have been the point at which a new location should have been sought. Recovery from addiction is extremely difficult, as is finding appropriate treatment. I ask that you please consider the difficult situation of those of us in early recovery from addiction and do not allow the opening of a dispensary in the building directly next door and well within 600 feet of a currently operating safe space of recovery. As a side point, as someone who did use marijuana for medical reasons, and then as a failed attempt to mask my depression and PTSD, I can attest that marijuana can be a gateway drug. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Matthew Palmer, then Jeremy Frugie.
So my name is Matthew Palmer. I'm currently a client of Diamond House Detox. I've been a client there since October, and I will complete my treatment next Tuesday with them. I've been using drugs and alcohol since I was 16 years old. I've been fighting this my entire life. I am the evidence that pot, that marijuana, that weed, whatever you want to call it, is a gateway drug. It does trigger you to use other drugs, especially if you are trying to recover from it. I don't go to Fat Ducks Pizza and get triggered to get a beer. I go to Fat Ducks Pizza and I get triggered to get a slice. There's a difference. There is a difference between a pizza parlor that serves beer and a dispensary whose sole purpose is to distribute cannabis products to the public. To have access to that while you're in treatment for dual diagnosis, for being in treatment for having anxiety, having depression, having bipolar disorder, and also being a user of substances at the same time is no easy task. And to know that that, there is such easy access... It's already hard enough to know that there is access to liquor stores, but you can't go anywhere and not be in 600 feet from a liquor store. You can't. So why should there be another, a seventh trigger for people in Diamond House? Why should there be a seventh trigger? It makes no sense. I didn't ask to be born this way. I didn't ask to be born into a world that glorifies alcohol and glorifies tobacco. I didn't ask to be born into this world. But I was. I was. And so were many, many other people. So were the hundreds of other people that are going to go through Diamond House Detox and hopefully get their lives saved. But they're going to have to deal with this one more obstacle that is just going to impede their recovery. And it's no doubt that she's done her due diligence. It's no doubt that she's worked hard to get where she's at. And it's sad that it's come to this point, but it's not worth putting a price tag on somebody's recovery. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jeremy Frugie, F-R-U-G-E. Thank you. And then following Jeremy is Gloria Manus, then Carly Brannon.
This is my second stint with Diamond House. First, before I say anything about the place that has been helpful to me, I commend and support minority-owned businesses. I'm a Hispanic kid from Harlem, New York.
Speak to the council, please, sir.
How I got to Sacramento, I don't know, but I'm a successful business owner. I also work for a big company and have some issues with alcohol and drugs. I'm also a coach, and I am a mentor and a motivational speaker. When I look at this situation, it's difficult because I don't like politics. I don't like making decisions that involve them because somebody is going to get hurt or somebody's going to get an aye and somebody's going to get a yea. When it comes to the rehabilitation process and I look at what Diamond House is doing, it is incredible. They have an unbelievable support system there. But then when I look at what she's trying to do with her business, it's a difficult decision. But what I see in Diamond House, I see a lot of people in early, early recovery, very fragile. So when they come outside and they look and they see, when they go outside to smoke and do things, and the first thing they might see is the dispensary, like most of the people on this side of the fence here said, it's going to be a trigger. And I know that she has spent a lot of money and invested a lot of money, but when you took, when you take a look at the people that are trying to get their lives together and rehabilitate their lives, I think you can't put a price tag on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Gloria Manus, then Carly Brannon. And then we'll go to our speakers online, and our first is call-in user one.
My name is Gloria Manus. I'm a member of Mae Vang's district, and I am speaking here today on behalf of Lucretia Young. She is a responsible individual. I've known her since she was 13 years old. And it is my belief that she will be diligent in ensuring continued outreach within the community of her proposed legal, safe, and regulated dispensary at 7909 Bruceville Road. As one of only two black women in Sacramento, to obtain this opportunity out of over 120 applicants, I want to emphasize the importance of allowing this business to move forward. Allowing Lucretia to be a leader in social equity justice by creating a space in an industry that disproportionately impacted the black and brown communities. I fully support this applicant as a business owner, and I am asking that you please approve her application to move forward with the project to get the store up and running so we can provide valuable tax dollars to the city. I myself use a ointment, marijuana ointment, for pain in my knees, and it reduces the pain in my knees very effectively. So I just want to add that to it, and I think Council should consider her application and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carly Brannon. And following Carly will go online, and we have about nine callers.
So a lot of what I was going to say has already been said. I do want to kind of start off by talking a little bit about language. This is not a criticism of any of the patients who have come up here who use cannabis, but those who purport themselves to be medical professionals should not be using the word marijuana. That is a word that the United States of America started using as a racialized term for cannabis in the early to mid-1950s against black and brown folks because there was a lot of anti-Mexican immigrant sentiment for those immigrating to our country due to the Mexican Civil War. So language is very important, particularly from those who say that they're medical professionals. The appellate mentioned clients exiting their facility and visiting a liquor store, sometimes bringing the liquor back to their facility. I think it's very important to acknowledge that a liquor store is not a cannabis dispensary. Many people begin using opiates for pain, and then later their use becomes disordered because of the addictiveness of the drug. And cannabis can be used to manage pain instead of the opioid. As an example, my mother was diagnosed with cancer in 2015. By 2017, she had passed away. In between, she had multiple rounds of chemotherapy, radiation, multiple surgeries. And cannabis, while it did not stop her from dying, it saved her life in that it totally improved her quality of life while she was here. It helped my father maintain sobriety from alcohol for many, many, many years. He quit smoking cannabis because of the stigma against it, began drinking again, and is now at a point where his liver is failing, his internal organs are failing, and he's just sitting around waiting to die because of his alcohol use and the mental illness that it's...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Diane DeSalvo, then Michael Parr.
My name is Diane DeSalvo. I am one of the owners of Valley High Shopping Center on Bruceville Road. And I would just like to say, I think there's been some comments and questions that haven't been answered properly, so I want to just give you a little bit of information. Everyone in the center, what in our center, was notified that we were looking at a cannabis dispensary. We didn't have any opposition to that. The building that Diamond Detox Center is in is not part of our center, so there, you know, we don't have to, we didn't have to let them know, but we did go ahead and let Ms. Young know that she could, you know, speak with them if she wanted to. You know, we have alcohol, we have, you know, this has been said, there are cannabis, there are two or three other cannabis dispensaries within a stone's throw of Diamond Detox. So I want to make sure that everyone realizes that we feel, this is, I'm speaking for myself and the other owners of the center, we feel targeted here because the proximity of other dispensaries i- is right there. So, you know, I get that we're close, but she has done all of her due diligence, and I feel like this is an issue that could have been resolved a long time ago. I'm also willing to answer any other questions that you have about the center because I can tell you exactly who we are, what we do, and how much money she has paid on that dispensary thus far.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Michael Parr. Michael Parr, if you'll unmute.
My name is Michael Parr. I am an M.D. I've worked in the field of addiction medicine for over 30 years, but that isn't what I want to talk about. Our patients can go anywhere, to any dispensary, if they want to get marijuana. I think that what I've heard is it would be nice for the city and the planning commission if the two parties could mediate because it could let them off the hook of miscommunication, poor communication, bringing us to this situation tonight. I'm impressed with Ms. Young's preparation. I think that she has the talent and experience to run a business. My question is, how does it look for the city, the city council, and the planning commission to say, "Well, we were going to rent out a large space in this building and collect some taxes, but we're going to put it right next to a treatment center"? The two businesses are in a natural conflict. I don't know how you're going to solve it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is call-in user one. Mr. Davis.
Hello, yes, my name is Lambert Davis, and as I have been listening to this, and I've been studying the core participants for years, this is a tremendous injustice to the applicant, and I'm more convinced of it now because of what the owners just said. There's other things that are close to it. It has a racial overtone to me. And to me, I think to get the city's attention, because remember, there's a department inside the city manager's office that's called the Cannabis Department. They should have already worked all of this out. And I personally think, as a person who owns a business and has submitted a lot of paperwork to City Hall, I personally think this applicant should be refunded all of her money, everything made whole if she is not approved because she's done everything you wanted her to do. And when I just heard the owners of the facility endorse her and talk about other things that are close to this facility, she should be reimbursed, and so should every core member, and the city should reimburse them. Because that's a lot of money to be waiting on a maybe after they've met every requirement. So thank you to the owners of the facility for confirming that she's done everything she was supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Nikala Smith.
Hi. I want to give a personal testimony on marijuana use and why we should not put this dispensary by my home of 24 years. I was addicted to marijuana, a Schedule I controlled substance, for I want to say two to three years, and it causes psycho... And it causes psychosis, mental illness. And men use this drug to prey on women, to human traffic them, to dilute them. All types of stuff comes with this drug. I don't want this by my home.
Please keep going.
I also want to say, for people who are being rehabilitated back into society, this could harm them. I think it could do more harm than good. I think, how can I put this into words? It should be used for medical purposes only, but not recreational use. Because I know the harmful effects of this drug. And it is a gateway drug. It's not good for the mental health, the mind. It's not good for our community here in Sacramento. That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Maisha Bahati, and then Tanya Wright.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maisha Bahati. I am a core graduate. I'm also one of the 10 core participants to receive the opportunity to open up a storefront dispensary. I am in the process, just like La King, opening a storefront on J Street. We were given three years by the city council to open these dispensaries. We have 13 months left. If we do not open our dispensaries, we will lose the opportunity. And that has been stressed to us throughout this process. I can, I fully support La King, and I second everything she stated about finding a location, extremely difficult to find a location in Sacramento. The money that is put up to get to the point to where you have a CUP hearing, I mean, you've paid rent, architects, permitting fees, I mean, you've given up so much money to get to this point. I understand why La King does not want to mediate. Because that is more time. And time is money at this point. Who knows when she's going to get back on the schedule to have this voted? She's done her due diligence. She's done everything that she's supposed to do. It takes a long time to open these dispensaries. I'm about, I started my process maybe about three months after she did. And there's still a ways to go. There are still several departments that have to sign off. There's still, you know, the city that has to do their thing. Yeah, I mean, there's just so, there's still a long way to go. And I personally feel like the Detox Center could probably move a lot easier than she could. If she cannot open her storefront, she is going to lose the opportunity that you, the city council, gave to us. So, again, I fully support La King. I pray that she gets his opportunity to open her storefront. She's done the work. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Tanya Wright.
Hi, this is Tanya Wright. I just want to start off by saying, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers. I've known Lucretia for over 20 years. And I've also watched her during this process. And I also want to... But I just want to say that it takes a lot of courage, first of all, to even take that path, to have your head high. I feel and know that you deserve this. You've worked very hard for this. Like you said, with all the consulting, meeting up with people, the long nights, sacrificing time with your family, sacrificing your health, which I've known you've been dealing with since I've known you for the last plus years. So I know it is only right that what is due to you, which is the right to have what you've been fighting for, to have the right to give back to the community, to have the right to show your kids what it is like to fight and to achieve and do the right things. Because that's what you get when you do the right thing. So, I just say to all of you that are listening, and to you, Lucretia, I'm proud of you guys. And I just vote that you guys approve. Approve her dispensary, because I support. Poach her, baby. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Barry Boyd. Barry Boyd, if you'll unmute.
Sorry about that. I was a little slow on the trigger. Good evening to all, council, and those in the gallery. I am Barry Boyd, a very long-term resident of the Medaview neighborhood. I am also a commissioner on the City of Sacramento's Planning and Design Commission. I was in attendance for the planning and design commission of the applicant. And as well, the appellant was in attendance. We were all via Zoom. My comments are this. As it has been pointed out, that the appellant had been operating illegally for months, her rehab center in its current location that's being discussed in this meeting. In the PDC meeting, the appellant also stated that she had leased her current facility sight unseen. My mind was boggled. Who would do that of any type of business owner? Just like, okay, I'll take it. Didn't bother to vet out what triggers may or may not be there. There, as it's been pointed out, there's multiple triggers, i.e. the businesses that sell alcohol and tobacco in the same facility. There's a third-party cannabis business literally across the street, to which this rehab center has a relationship to. And my thoughts are that that third-party cannabis business is forcing an issue to not let this applicant get her CUP, so there isn't any competition. As was stated in that PDC meeting, I was asked by the president of the Medaview Neighborhood Association if there was anything I could do to prevent the applicant...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Malakai Seku Amen, and then Rhonda Henderson. Malakai, if you'll unmute.
Malakai Amen, if you'll unmute. Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Greetings, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This is Malakai Amen, Director of the Institute for More. The first thing I want to say is the public health aspects of weed policy is extremely important to the institute, which is why our organization and staff contributed over $30,000 and 400 man-hours, leading up to the passage of Measure L for our youth. But there's a very nuanced way to looking at the tax revenue, public health, business and economic development, and criminal justice system reform aspects of cannabis policy. And that's particularly why I'm here to convey strong support for Lucretia King Young's storefront dispensary application, which will serve hundreds of medical cannabis use patients who visit the nearby Kaiser Hospital and deserve sensitivity as they manage illness and chronic pain. And so, as stigmas and regulation and consumer education surround cannabis policy, the scientific research also carves a valid place for Ms. Young's health and wellness-centered business model. In addition to treating medical conditions, the National Institutes of Health Research supports cannabis use as an effective treatment to decrease the explosive rise of opioid use and addiction. We also know that poverty and racial wealth gaps stand among the greatest triggers for use of addictive substances and mental health trauma. For reasons stated above, we urge this council to be fair as it views Ms. Young's application through a sensitive-use lens. We also hope that your careful consideration of the sequence of events that established Ms. Young's facility leased...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Rhonda Henderson, and then D5 Resident. Rhonda Henderson, if you'll unmute.
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, I am the president of North Aguna Creek Valley High Community Association. And we support Ms. Young's business in our district, as she has done her due diligence. And she should not be held hostage of her business. And she should not be held hostage of people's, the clients who have problems with drugs. She has to also consider what she's bringing to the community as a black woman. The first black woman that would have a cannabis business in Sacramento, or the second one to this, too. But I just think she's done what she's supposed to do. She's already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and is to no fault of her own. She did her homework. But she should be approved tonight. There should not be a delay. Delay will cost her extra money. Daily, she's spending $14,000, $15,000 a month. Okay? So we should not hold back now. This should have been resolved when you first heard about the Health Center. Okay? Now you're going to have her wait six months? That's not fair to her. It's not fair to anybody. And cannabis, I use cannabis for pain, too. Cannabis is not all bad. And we can't control people's mindset if they can't control themselves and not go buy cannabis if they don't need it. Just like we can't control people not to buy alcohol or cigarettes. So my motion to the council is to approve her tonight. Don't let her wait another minute. It's time. Thank you.
Next speaker is D5 Resident, and then Kevin Hooks.
Hi, council. Hi, my name is Matt. And I, my recovery date is June 8, 1997. I've been clean and sober over 25 years. And I'm going to start with reading a little thing out of the Alcoholics Anonymous Big Book, because in treatment, they treat alcohol as a drug, period, whether it's drugs, alcohol, or whatever. Of alcoholics who came to AA and really tried, 50% got sober at once and remained that way. 25% sobered up after some relapses. And among the remainder of those who stayed on with AA showed improvement. The recovery rate today is about 10% with treatment or without treatment. If you're going to stay sober, you're going to stay sober. When I left recovery, I didn't not go to the grocery store and walk down the liquor aisle. I didn't not go to my Group 3 meeting, which was above a liquor store. I did not go to Group 1 because it's next door to a liquor store. I stayed sober because I wanted to. And you have to want it. And that's the reality of recovery. If you don't want it, and you're not ready, you're not going to get sober. This reminds me of when I applied for my state license to be a contractor. I went through all kinds of hoops and rigmarole, and I had to get letters of recommendation to prove that I was a good guy. You know what? This lady's done everything she's needed to do, and I say let her have it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kevin Hooks.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. I had a lot to say on this issue that many of the councilmembers have already addressed and mentioned, like the question of Diamond Group's BOT not even being filed with the city. But they get to halt this project when she chose to be in an area surrounded by nine other sensitive uses. I'm very familiar with this area. I have grown up and lived in this area almost my whole life. And the rehab facility interest is not at the front or facing the proposed dispensary. It is facing fat ducks, which everyone has stated. Looking at the map, you see all of the triggers that people have mentioned. But more important, my question I have is, you know, the fact that this can be continued. Why should Lucretia have to continue to compensate when she has gone above and beyond? Ms. Vicky has stated through emails and even on planning commission meetings that she will not work with Lucretia, and she does not want it to be approved. Now, she may have said it now, but what does the council wish to gain for mediation if she doesn't want it to be approved? I'm confused, and I think the public may be as well. What more can she do? Let's think about what Lucretia has offered. She offered to change and spend more money to remove windows and signage, which will actually hurt the visibility of her store. She offered to do this when the planning commission advised her she does not have to do this. She offered to do this when she felt very confident she would be approved because of staff's recommendation, as well as the commission. Again, what more do you want her to do? And to, you know, the people that have spoken about addiction and how cannabis hurts, I mean, let's be honest, medicating and rehabilitation is subjective. It's what you choose. Let's not use that as an argument. I believe you guys will make the correct decision. And Ms. King's commitment to this area that she has grown up in, as well as me, cannot be questioned not one bit. Please vote to approve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Snell is our final speaker on this item.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right, good evening. My name is Mike Snell. I'm the owner of the First Veteran and Black-owned dispensary on 812536 Ave., located in District 6. I've already obtained a state license. I'm just waiting on planning to get me on schedule for the final walkthrough so I can obtain my CVO. And I'm on this because I've only gotten this position after being vilified by the U.S. Air Force for simply self-medicating after multiple tours through Iraq and Afghanistan. I got in this position through character judgment and resilience. And based off my character judgment, Vicky has been a bad neighbor from jump, refusing to be community-oriented. This could have been resolved simply between Vicky having a simple discussion with, regardless of her landlord's miscommunication. That's not Lucretia's fault. So, this whole issue should be with her landlord to begin with. And the attorney, all that should be with her landlord, not Lucretia. Going forward, no business is better than the other. These are both minority women. These are both minority businesses. You could work together. You're both in the health and wellness space. Okay? There's triggers, they're everywhere. Some people got to step up. Hey, let's put together a roster. Let's agree to put together a roster of patients that are going to rehab that cannot be sold to... I mean, this is a simple fix, guys. This should not be a matter of Lucretia has to move. This was already in the process. Okay? So, Vicky, unfortunately, I'm sorry, I see character judgment, you're a good business. But then on the other side, I'm wondering if this is special interest for Embark or another business? Because I'm seeing an addict in a Patagonia. There's just, my character judgment, there's a lot of stuff that's just not smelling out right to me, and I feel like there's bamboozle going on. And there's definitely racial undertone. Shout out to Carly for speaking out about, we shouldn't be calling this marijuana, it's cannabis, okay? Get educated on the terminology, get educated about the industry, and understand going forward...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you very, very much to the public for weighing in. I think under the process now, Madam City Attorney, it's appropriate to ask the appellant to come on up and respond to anything that you have heard that you would like to respond to. I mean, I think we've had a very thorough hearing here. What's that?
I'll do it.
We're going to close the public hearing.
Public comment, period.
Excuse me, we're going to close the public comment, period. And now you have a chance to respond briefly, if you would, please.
I just want to respond to some of the comments.
Just a moment. I apologize, your speaker is not on.
Okay. I just want to respond to some of the comments. I mean, I think neither anyone I've asked to speak for me or myself has bad-mouthed Lucretia, or the Core Program, or anything. I'm not saying, you know, I mean, I think there's a lot of things that I do take to offense about my business. We, I'm an ethical person with integrity. I am a nurse. I spend my life helping people. And to be called, I mean, Barry Boyd is, I don't think that he should have been able to comment. Isn't he your planning commission? Isn't he who had some sort of control over this getting to this point? He made a public comment. He basically stated that I was running an illegal business, which has no fact. He stated I saw the facility sight unseen. That is untrue. I met with my property manager, looked at the site. He also said, basically, I was working with Embark. That is like the most insane thing I have ever heard. I am working with a marijuana dispensary on the side to basically railroad her? I mean, there's none of that going on. Honestly, this has probably been the most uncomfortable thing for me. I have...
Hey, please, stop. Stop!
Exactly.
That's not respectful. And it's not, it's not the kind of dignity that we expect in this kind of a hearing. Let the appellant speak.
Yes.
Please.
I am not racist.
With respect.
My clients come from all different backgrounds. This is not a race thing. My question to you guys is, if this was not a Core applicant, would this be different? Because I hear a lot of race, and I hear a lot of Core, but this is a land use issue. So, remove... So remove all that. How would this have been? If this was just a regular person wanting a dispensary?
A regular person? What does that mean?
A regular, not core applicant, anybody out there that has a dispensary, would this have changed the course of this? I, again, I've said this multiple times, I have nothing against Lucretia. I think she's amazing for getting this far. I feel terrible that she has spent this much money. I have also told you I'm willing to assume her lease. I've also made concessions to help. All my desire is to basically make sure that my place is a safe place for my clients, which I serve on a day-to-day basis. My staff work their butts off to make sure these people can propel themselves back into society safely. They come to us because it is a safe place. So that is my last comment.
Okay.
You know, I don't know what to say.
I have one question for you before I turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Bang, okay? There's one thing that I don't understand in terms of the process. Ms. Young reached out to you multiple times, and yet you say your attorneys wouldn't let you meet with her. Well, we're here today, and you haven't met. And I don't, I don't.
I'm really?
I'm not saying you got bad or good legal advice. That's not my job, but I sure wish that you had responded to one of her inquiries and had actually sat down before the hearing.
I'm glad you asked that. That is something I wanted to speak to. Lucretia, in her very first meeting that I attended, and it is recorded, stated that she had met with me already and that I was okay, not knowing that I was on the call. I got two minutes to respond. I stated that I had never met with her and didn't know about her until the day before. There were so many negative comments about my facility and me that I told, actually my vein, that I was uncomfortable meeting with her by myself because I did not know how that conversation was gonna go, and I didn't want it to escalate into anything. You have to admit, there have been a lot of negative comments on my character, my integrity, my business, my clients, that I didn't want anything unobserved by a neutral party.
Okay.
And that's why I involved legal and you guys, so that there wasn't this back-and-forth negativity that would sour things even more.
Fair enough. Thank you for answering. The appellant, excuse me, the applicant gets one opportunity to rebuttal, but I'm gonna ask you to come up and make it brief, please. The evening is getting late, and we've been through all this, and we want to get to a decision, so please keep it brief.
Sure. So I think, briefly, this is core, though. This is that opportunity. This is what this is. I am a minority owner. I am one of only two women. This is that program. This is what you put in place. This is what the voters asked for. So I do understand, and if that situation presented itself, then that would be what you would be up against right now, but you're not. You are up against this decision, and I am asking, from a core perspective, because I went through the program for this purpose. I worked hard, and I did what I was supposed to do for this purpose, to get right here. And with that, I will leave it to your decision.
Thank you very much. Now, let's turn it over to the city council for some form of decision.
Thanks, Mayor.
And I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Bang.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we have several of my colleagues in the queue. I just first want to take this moment to thank all the residents who called in during public comment. Also, I want to thank everyone in the chambers, in the people's chamber, for having the courage to come up here and share your insight and your lived stories of whether you support or you're in opposition. Just really appreciate all of you coming up here. I also just want to take this moment to say thank you, especially to residents in my district, especially members of the North Laguna Valley High Neighborhood Association, residents from the Medeville Neighborhood Association who spoke today, and those who reached out to our office regarding this proposal. Mayor, I'll make this quick. I like to close a public hearing and make a motion to deny the appeal based on the evidence presented tonight by both staff and the applicant regarding measures to mitigate against any potential harms to the surrounding community. And because of this, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to approve the CUP for the seventy-nine oh nine Bruceville Road businesses and deny the third-party appeal.
Seconded by Councilmember Maple, let's go through the queue now. And again, we've had a lengthy hearing, but please make your points.
I get your point, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, yeah.
But I have two, two simple questions. First one, again, I'll go back to comment to the applicant, if you're willing to mediate. And that's fine if you say no. It's fine if you say yes.
Let's put it on the record.
Yeah.
I would like for you to vote now, and I am open for mediation after.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. And then the question here to the appellant here, Ms. Vicki, and this is, I need you to come up, you know, here. One, the applicant has committed to, and in the staff report, has agreed to voluntary restrictions to signage, to visibility. So what are the factors that affect your clients, or that would affect your clients, if there is no signage, if essentially the business? And let me just say that, I have one hundred and forty-two applications in my district, so I'm very familiar with this, and I was involved in drafting Title Seventeen and the core program, and voted on a number of these, and the grant funding for all these, so I'm very familiar with this. What are the factors, given the number of restrictions in the staff recommendation, that would affect your clients?
We talked about the smell. You can't control where somebody uses it. And we also, I mean, they walk, they have to smoke. We're not allowed to let our clients smoke within our building. That is per the landlord. They literally have to walk off-site to smoke, and pretty much where they go is right next to fat ducks or that area. So they're bound to eventually find that it's right next door.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So let me ask staff here, are there conditions for use? Is this private property? Is it a private parking lot? In past, in past applications, we've had security requirements, we have all these requirements. What condition was, thank you, Vicki, you can sit down. What conditions have you considered, has staff considered, given that factor, to the potential clients of the other business?
The conditions that we've recommended, the commission endorsed for this permit are fairly standard at this point. That includes security provided onsite. The lobby is secure. There is a no loitering provision, which ensures that no smoking should occur out front. And that, I don't know if that answers your question.
Okay. Yes. And so then, if the neighboring business, not even just hers, say the pizza parlor, because I want to take my kids to Pizza Parlor, said, hey, we have people smoking outside or violating that conditional use, they can call the city and respond to that violation of the conditional use?
They certainly could. They could contact the operator as well, but we would welcome their complaint.
Okay. I understand they could also contact the operator, but, you know, the stopgap is the city at this point. Okay. Great. I appreciate that. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm gonna listen to my colleagues here a little bit, but I want to put some context here. Number one, the reason why we're here is because when we drafted Title Seventeen, we made this a subjective requirement. It is a sensitive use. If it was a prohibited use, we discussed that. And the previous council before us, when the dispensaries first opened up, frankly, had a free-for-all. And, you know, the outpatient facility that's next to the cannabis dispensary on Power and Road is in my district, and back then, I probably wouldn't have voted for it because of that. Now, when we drafted Title Seventeen and moved forward and said, we need to discuss these on a case-by-case basis, and considering those factors. That's exactly why, you know, even though a tobacco retailer is a condition, we just said, well, if it's one, who knows, is that really an issue? But if there's many, then that could be a problem. The real question here that we have, and the one that I'm struggling with, and you've helped me find better clarity, is this a compatible use? Because the challenge that we have is, we have a situation where the action today will follow, will follow the land regardless if this applicant is successful or not. And if it results in one business, particularly one that addresses substance abuse, I think that's a terrible loss for the city. I mean, you know, even when that outpatient facility was trying to locate in my council district, it was difficult for them to find. You know, some of these facilities are also uses that others don't want around them. So we need to be very thoughtful about this final action. And so this is, this is the quandary that I find myself in. And many of us have probably had family members who've suffered substance abuse. So herein lies the concern. The last point that I will say, and maybe if, you know, that I'll take, I'll actually bring this up to the city managers, it troubles me to hear that Ms. Young did so much. And by the way, I want to commend you for the way you've gone through this program, because I've watched it through this whole time and how struggling it was. And you've done an amazing job. If there was a, if this was in a different location or didn't even have this application, this is a textbook way of trying to move through the process. And it's not so much that you did the right thing or not, it's the question that the council has, whether it's compatible uses, and that's why we're here. But the troubling thing that I have, City Manager, is that when we issued that, the funding to the organizations to help give technical advice, they were supposed to help with this particular issue. The business aspect of learning how to run a general business is something that we already fund through other pots of money to those same organizations. And the thing that we actually needed them to focus on was this particular issue, to help folks who don't know the Title Seventeen process, who need access to land acquisition and capital, to making sure that they, quote-unquote, as we would say, run the traps on all the bureaucracy involved in this. But that was a failure in that particular funding. So I'd like to see, moving forward, how those organizations that we funded are helping actually prevent this type of problem, because it's been unfair. I mean, it's unfortunate that we are here with two, you know, business owners who want to do something positive, and that's where we're at here today. So, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to make sure that we add that to this point here.
Well, I'd like to have Davina Smith come up just for a second to talk about what core is, and when it was created, what was the intent, and some of the things that you were talking about here.
Well, I'm not sure that I want to do that tonight.
No, well, no, Mr. City Manager, that's not what I asked.
I'm not sure I want to do this tonight. No.
Yeah.
Thank you. No. Ms. Smith, thank you. Mr. City Manager, we're gonna, we can have a policy hearing, then. The mayor pro tem's raised an issue, and it's not, and it's just something to discuss in the future, but I want to get to a vote here.
Yeah. So here's the dilemma I have, and I'm gonna sit and think for it as my, because we've got a couple colleagues punched up here, because I want to make sure that if, that where's the stopgap? Because my concern here is, again, you have a sensitive use that could falter because of this action, and that's the issue here. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna stop there. Again, back to our question, and where I struggle here is this point. And just, you know, just to, you know, let Ms. Young know, part of the reason we, when we looked at the distance requirements and shrank them down to six hundred feet, was to balance sensitive uses, because there are so many. At one point, the council was looking at a thousand feet or two thousand feet, and that limited the options that we had. So this balance of us being able to find locations, and we're still talking through the zoning process to increase locations to make sure we don't have those conflicts. So at this point, look, I'll tell you, my biggest concern here is not so much that there are tobacco parlors or other, is that we're dealing with the potential risk to a substance abuse facility faltering. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, but before, hold on, before, I just want to say, Councilman McGarry, you've raised an important policy issue around the core program. And I do want to say in fairness, because there's two ways that this core program gets constructed. One is the direction that the city council gives, right, in terms of what we want, and then two is how it's implemented. So what I want to do, rather than discuss it tonight, because we want to get to a vote, is I want to ask the manager, let's agendize this, because it's an important update anyways. And that way, it's not criticism necessarily. It's what we should do, is to look inside, all of us, what we did in terms of the direction we gave, how it's being implemented, and if we need to improve each other, then that's what we'll do in terms of the operation of the program.
And, Mr. Mayor, we have that coming up in Law and Legislature.
That's what we'll do.
So.
Oh, you want to do it in Law and Ledger?
Yes.
That's fine, too. Sure. A venue where we can talk about all this stuff.
I appreciate it.
It's all good. Okay. Councilmember Valenzuela.
All right. Well, I will echo my colleagues when I say that I absolutely hate this situation, but honestly, the question about mediation should have been broached six months ago. So based on what I've heard tonight, I'm voting in the applicant's favor to deny the appeal. And I just want to make super clear that this is not a different outcome, because this is a core participant. We want to talk about the land use implications here, right? Because I hear the sensitivity of treatment. My dad was a marriage and family therapist. I understand the implications for treatment, which really raises the question about why this location was picked for a recovery center in the first place. You just gave us an example of your patients needing to smoke cigarettes basically outside of an establishment that sells alcohol. You know, this was stuff that was known, and frankly, stuff that, so when we talk about, well, we don't want to do this because we're worried about the potential exposure to sensitive patients, that argument doesn't hold water for me for that very big reason. It's just, that's from a policy perspective, from a land use perspective, that's how I'm looking at this. It'd be one thing if this was the only thing that was coming in, and you were there by yourself as an island, and there was no other use around you. That would have a different implication for me from a sensitive use perspective. And as you, and also from a land use perspective, I want to just reemphasize, the applicant really did pick the perfect place. There was no recovery center next to her when she started this process. And in fact, I, and I know we're gonna talk about sensitive uses, and we just started talking about this today again at Law and Ledger, but I don't think tobacco sales makes sense as a sensitive use. You know, she was going through the process, but like, that's one of those policies that I think probably made sense when we first started the program, that I think we should look at, because, you know, if you're selling cigarettes next door, I don't understand why that implicates cannabis in any significant way. So I'm just gonna reemphasize that. I really hope that these two businesses work together. I think you have a shared desire here. I think parking lot security is one of those obvious examples that you both don't want people sitting outside of the dispensary using cannabis. Absolutely. As I mentioned, I have a lot of dispensaries in my district, and a lot, and every single one of them does an excellent job of maintaining their perimeter. A lot of them have twenty-four-seven security onsite, just to make sure, because it's in their best interest to make sure that their product is protected, and that, in that way, they can help protect that entire block from bad activity, because they're gonna be there watching that storefront and making sure that things are okay. So that's my case, Mayor. I'll keep it brief, and I'll vote to deny the appeal as well.
Vicki, Councilmember Valenzuela. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank city staff, Vicki, Lucretia. I met with each of you. I told you I would hold off making my decision. I'm a new council member, so I wasn't sitting on the council when Title Seventeen was created or those discussions. I spent a lot of time, my staff will know, they created a binder for me that has Title Seventeen, that has the planning commission, that has the rules and regulations that have to be followed, and has the reports. Tonight is hard. Like, it really is. We have two amazing women business owners. Hooray! Hurrah for that, because there still is not equality with women-owned businesses. And I say that because I'm one-two, and I've had to struggle just as much as each one of you in their own way. I also, Vicki, want to applaud each one of your clients that came. My undergrad degree is criminal justice with an emphasis on alcohol and drug addiction. I also happen to be an attorney. I know how hard it is for those recovering from addiction to stand up here in front of us, people they don't know, and lay their soul bare. That is enough to trigger. Bravo on them, and I hope they pat themselves on the back for the bravery of coming before us and telling us those things. Here's the hard part. Tonight is a land use decision. It's not an emotional decision, and that's what's hard, because I see the emotion here tonight on both sides. And I think what tonight our council brought up, and I look forward to continuing discussions, because it highlighted areas where we didn't think about when we made Title Seventeen, and it highlights how we need to further support or reexamine our core program, because tonight isn't about our core program. It just highlighted issues that we have, and it's not doing what it deserves to know. highlighted issues that we have, and it's not doing what it deserves to know. So kudos on you, Lacretia. I'm an attorney. You're not an attorney. The amount of work you put in to do this, to understand to create a business, to start a business, to figure out all the rules and regulations when there are impediments, and our system was designed for impediments. Bravo to you for how hard you worked on that. So tonight, I listened to everyone. And now, because this is an emotional issue, I've got to separate. I've got to look at my 23 years of experience of being an attorney and go to land use. What is, what, what did the facts say? Because Title 17.228.90 says that a conditional use permit has to go to Planning and Design Commission if it's, if a cannabis dispensary is going to be within a sensitive area. It was already identified that there were two tobacco retailers over 15,000 feet which qualify for a sensitive use. And it was, thank you, city staff, clearly laid out, which you were consistent, and when new information was found, you added it. So my one question I ask, and I think you answered it earlier, but I just want to highlight it. Has the Planning and Design Commission approved a cannabis or dispensary in other sensitive use areas when they've been highlighted?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. And then, again, I think that brings up Councilmember Garrett, which you talked about, and Pro Tem, my Vang, we need to have a discussion, what does that mean? And what is that parameter? While it's still allowing us, on a case-by-case basis, to discuss, to discuss what that means and what our decision should be. I do know as a fact that when Diamond House came into existed, existence, it was near six businesses serving alcohol and tobacco. And then highlighted when staff tried to do another radius map and see there were some licenses or things mixed, but Diamond House did come into existence, and we took a step back, and it did go to Planning and Design Commission. So where I come tonight is that evidence, for me, has not been presented, that this addition will create an additional nuisance that did not already exist prior to Diamond House coming into existence. The evidence also is I look at, the city did a cannabis study that was released on March 8th, 2022, that said cannabis businesses have not had a negative impact on other nearby retailer industrial uses, had not had a negative impact on nearby home values, did not create increases in crimes beyond the level generated by other business, and the industry does not produce negative economic effects on commercial and residential districts. So therefore, I'm satisfied that the measures taken by city staff and by the applicant, especially adding on additional restrictions that she was not required to do, address community concerns, and therefore, I support the denial of this appeal.
Okay. Sorry, Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Young, just a question. You don't have to get up. The facility is going to have a security guard, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Would you by any chance know what time of the day the deliveries usually get? I'm, I'm, I just don't know that, that kind of information. Is there a certain time that you can set with them? Hey, we can only get delivery?
I don't have that schedule.
And based, based on your experience, when, when a van pulls up for a delivery, does it create that odor that like, let's say, cultivation place creates?
It may have. However, all of our, yeah, all of our operations are indoor.
Excuse me, we can't hear you if you don't speak into the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't want to get a, my apologies.
I apologize.
I'm so sorry.
When we initially submitted our application, we did have fencing on the outside, so then, perhaps then, but we actually changed our design. All our operations are indoors. It will be rolled up, the car will go in, everything will be inside.
Which was back of your building.
In the back of the store, and we will adhere to older ordinances that are already in place, and, and all the other restrictions that we have to follow without loitering or anyone. And the patients themselves, how also have legal guidelines they have to follow in regard to not consuming, and how much they can buy from us on a daily basis.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that information. Appreciate it. Just as my colleague stated, this is a land use issue, and really has nothing to do, when, when, when it comes to business, business doesn't understand gender, color of skin, religion, where you're from, nothing. You work hard, you hope that you can make it successful. I too, I'm at the, based on hearing all the facts and reading all the facts, I will deny the, the, the appeal. But one thing I would highly recommend is that starting a new business is very tough on both ends, both for Ms. Vicky and yourself. And being able to work together and make that happen, it just, it's a great policy to have. I feel you having a security guard outside in front of your door actually, might actually help the business that's right across from you. And creating that good business mentality, I can tell you it's going to go a lot further than being emotional, angry, or saying, hey, you did this, I'm going to do that, because that will only get you more costly, because attorneys will definitely want to play a role in this. And no offense to my colleagues who practice law, and of course, Madam City Attorney sitting next to me, to pay $500, $600 an hour so you guys can come to mediation and agree on everything that we're talking right now, it's just not worth it. I wish both of you nothing but the best, and I wish both of you to be prosperous and profitable. And you both are doing a great job, and you're both focused on what you're doing. Again, congratulations to both. And I only can wish and pray, and I noticed you were praying right there, that, you know, both of the businesses will help the community. Because at the end of the day, it seems like you have a lot of knowledge in this industry. I'll call it marijuana, you call it cannabis, but your information is a lot more than what I know, based on therapeutical aspects of it. So I understand you, you don't look at this as just cannabis, you look at it as an alternative way of healing. So I strongly believe that with that kind of attitude, and Ms. Vicky's compassion towards her patients, I'm hoping that this will be a great start to a great working relationship. So it's, it's not a perfect situation, but I tell you what, congratulations to you both. As business owners, it's your responsibility to make it work. So we did our job, now the rest is on you. Congratulations.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Maple, then Vice Mayor Gueda, then I'm going to make a last comment, and then we're going to vote. Okay?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And I'll, I'll make this brief, but I did want to say, I wanted to speak to, to both of you, and I wanted to say, to apologize for some of the comments that I've made. Comments that have been made against your character, insinuating things that aren't true. I'm sorry that that happened. It's not appropriate. I also want to say sorry that people were making claims that you weren't from the neighborhood, or that you didn't know the community. That's very obviously not true. And so I just want to apologize to both of you that you had to go through that. You shouldn't have had to do that. And I'm really grateful that you're both here, and that you went through this process. So then I want to just switch over to, you know, you've come a very long way to, to go through this process, to be in this place, and spent a lot of time and a lot of money doing that. But I also want to make it clear to people that you still have a long way to go. There is, in addition to the, the city's process, you have to go through a statewide process. This is a dual licensing system, for those who don't know. And so you have to submit hundreds of pages of documents, financials, ownership interests, everything to the state as well, and get that, get those permits. And then you have to go through inspections, and then you have to get your final approval, right? It's a lot of work. And I just want to say, this is one of the most regulated industries in the state of California. There are state law and regulations that dictate about consumption. So there are some questions about that. By state law, you cannot consume onsite without a proper license, which we don't even have here in the city, or in the parking lot. So you also, it also dictates, so this is a question about, about smell got brought up. So in retail establishments, it is dictated by state law that everything is packaged before sale, prepackaged, it's not open. So in terms of smell, you, the retail establishment is the place where you will sell at the least. So I just want to make that clear. You also have to have ventilation, you have to have security, and you have to have tested, testing for all of your products, right? And again, you know, the elephant in the room is, the illicit market is already there, right? There's already people that are, that are selling products, that don't have permits, that aren't getting testing, and they don't have to pay taxes. And you signed up to do the right thing. You want to do it the right way. And so I just want to commend you for that. And then one last note about the conditional use permit with the state with the building, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. But my understanding is, yes, the conditional use permit does state with the building. However, every operator has to get a business operations permit as well. And that often has conditions associated with the building. So the implications that another operator might move in and then not have to apply by the same rules, I just don't think that that's a fair, a fair point to make, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple, Vice Mayor Gueda, and then I'm going to close.
Yeah, no, thank you, Council, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, you know, here's, Councilmember Vang, Mayor Pro Tem Vang, if you're willing to accept this as part of the motion and direction, and have, and ask that the city manager report back one year after the beginning of the operation. And that ties closely with, you know, the BOP as well. I know we're looking at, how do we simplify the BOP, and some, there's been discussions about extending the BOP time, but for the sake of this applicant, because, again, the purpose is, is to protect, make sure that the success of both businesses occur, the, the substance abuse facility and that. I'd like to request that the motion include a report back within one year of operation. So that way, there's process improvement if there are issues. Maybe there won't be any issues, and hopefully mediation after this will occur. But if there isn't, then, then at least there's process improvement within that first year, so that we don't get into the situation where it goes. Is that, would you concur with that and support that?
Yeah, I'll support that, Vice Mayor. I'll add that to the motion on the table.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
For the one-year report back.
Who was the second?
I think.
Yeah.
I approve.
And I do want to say that, that the fact that you had so many community supporters, because before, Councilmember Maple was Councilmember Maple. She was in a room of a number of people in my district who were not supporters. And the fact that you had Jesse Reese there supporting you speaks a lot. Him and Juanita are huge members of the community that I respect. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll support the motion.
Thank you so much. Just very brief closing comments. You know, I just want to say I'm proud of the city council tonight. I'm proud of the city council. I really am. Because this is a very, very difficult issue, and I just think this was a really professional hearing, where the questions asked were detailed, they were serious, they were in depth, it took a little bit of time, but it, I think it, process here brought honor to the way everyone conducted themselves. So thank you for that. Vicky, I, I want to repeat what Councilmember Maple said a moment ago. From everything I know about you, and the business you are running, you're full of integrity, and you're doing work that is God's work, and the hardest of hard work. I've spent, I don't know if you know about all my background, but I've spent a lot of my public and professional life fighting for more services around mental health and substance abuse. And so I have tremendous gratitude and honor for what you have chosen to do. We, I do. And we, so, and that, there's no but to it, but it's just, it's genuine, okay? We sit here, as has been said many times, on an appeal, on a conditional use permit where we have to balance the equities, all right? And so this is the way I look at this. On the one hand, the applicant, Ms. Young, has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars following the process that we have laid out in order to start a business. And it would be the same if it wasn't core, but I want to tell you something. The fact that it's core makes it even more poignant to me, because we owe an obligation to our communities of color, our African-American community, to make sure that this core opportunity is real. So it's not dispositive, but it adds something to the equity. And on the other side, I will say, and this is where it's tough, while I understand your concern, I really do, and I think it's a rational concern, when it comes to, you said something, Ms. Young, that really, I think, stuck with me, correlation is not causation. Correlation is not causation. And so the fact that there may be some additional risk, given the location, there's also significant risk with the six other sensitive uses within the 600-foot, 600 feet, it's not a mile, 600-foot perimeter of your business. I just conclude that on balance, the equity belongs to the applicant. And so I'm going to vote for the main motion as well. And I hope, and please, even though this was maybe a little bit adversarial in things that you said, please, Ms. Young, when this vote is done, please follow through and meet with, with Vicky here, and work in good faith, because she's a good person, her organization's good. Work in good faith to make sure that you do everything that I know you intend to do anyways, and that is to be a good neighbor, to make sure that folks aren't leaving her facility. They should not have, they should not have access to your, to your business, period. Do everything you can to, to make that happen. All right? Let's call the roll, please.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Talamontes is absent. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang?
Congratulations, Ms. Young. Yes.
Your statement.
Yes. Thank you. The motion, motion passes. All right. Members, if, if Vice Mayor doesn't mind taking the, we are continuing, let's take a motion to continue the pro, pro housing item. Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, March 7th. I'm going to excuse myself and turn it over to the Vice Mayor for public comments and items, and council comments as well. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
I do not, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam Clerk, let's go to council comments. I have Councilmember Valenzuela punched up.
Thank you. I know right now the code, oh.
Hold on one moment. Excuse me. If folks could please take the conversation outside. Thank you very much. We've still got a meeting to conclude. Thank you guys very much. You're welcome to stay, though, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Welcome to stay.
So I just have a quick request. Right now, code enforcement and the city attorney's office are working on technical amendments to the amplified sound ordinance to address some concerns about sound that's interfering with public healthcare delivery. I'd like to ask the city attorney's office, if you could please, I think I'm supposed to formally request that Planned Parenthood be allowed to review the language before it comes back to, to council, if that's possible, so that they can just...
Yeah, I think, I think that was already part of what we were doing, is working with them, so.
Okay. I wasn't sure if I needed to formally request it. So, okay, there you go. And then I'd also like to just request that it be brought back as an urgency measure, just so it can go into effect immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Valenzuela. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're going to be planting trees at Marriott Park this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. If you want to come on out there and help us plant trees, for all the trees that we lost during the rain and the wind, we ask you to wear comfortable clothes. All tools will be provided, and this is an opportunity for you to give back to the city of Sacramento. So call my office if you'd like to come. And also, we have a Land Park Farmers Market that's put on by Eco Friendly Greens. It runs every Sunday through the end of the year, rain or shine, from 9:00 to 4:00, Section 4, at the Village Green in William Land Park. You can enjoy produce, baked goods, organics, microgreens, mushrooms, coffee, live music, and free yoga in the park. So that concludes our announcements.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Maple?
Yeah, so as a, thank you, Chair. As a part of a series of events, want to invite the community to Sacramento Juneteenth. They are hosting a Black History Month art reception at the Oak Park Community Center on February 23rd. So this is an excellent opportunity to support many of our local artists. So these artists have submitted American Black History themed pieces to the exhibit. We've included both a contest and a silent auction. Contest winners will receive prizes, with artists also receiving 100% of proceeds from the silent auction. So if you can, please come out on the 23rd at the Oak Park Community Center.
Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Okay, Madam Clerk, that concludes the comments from the council. If we could please move on to comments from the public on matters not on the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The first speaker is Kyle.
Madam Clerk, before you do, can you make the announcement about signing up for public comment?
Absolutely. I would like to remind members of the public, if you want to speak on this agenda item, public comments for matters not on the agenda. If you're in chambers, fill out a speaker slip. If you're in Zoom, please raise your hand. After the first speaker, we'll no longer accept speaker slips, and the raise hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. So in chambers, I have Kyle Williams, and I'm going to call off a few names, because I'm not sure if everybody stayed. Kyle Williams, Carly Brannon, Andy Bravonsky, Greg Schmidt.
Mr. Will, Mr. Williams?
I can speak for Greg Schmidt.
You can only speak... You can only speak for yourself, but you can frame, discuss whatever you want. You get two minutes.
No, I'm just letting you know Greg Schmidt could be scratched off. A buddy of mine, he left.
Thank you.
I'm saving you time. Sorry for trying to help. Are we ready?
Please proceed.
Hey, thank you very much once again for serving. And literally, there's so many people that don't participate. And you do participate. I don't always agree with you, but you do participate. And the older I get, the more I realize that you spend your time trying to help things. So thank you very much. I'm going to have a little fun with a little quick story. There was a lady, I've been down here for 23 years. This is particularly to the midtown area. I want to, I want you to act like all these chairs are filled and this is midtown and you guys live out in the suburbs, right? And this lady was right there to me and I was right there. And she used to run back and forth and just run down the leaf blowers. She was like a crazy woman. And I thought she was crazy, right? Well, this was 20 something years ago and I live out of my apartment complex and I have single pane windows. I'm not complaining to my landlord, it's a great place. Anyway, I soon found out what she was, was driving her nuts. Leaf blowers blow all the time down in midtown. If your leaf blower is blowing, she might hear it, she might hear it, she might hear it. But you're suburbanly spread out, so you only hear a leaf blower or two. You know, maybe three if you work out of your house. If you live in midtown, that's all you hear is leaf blowers all day long. And dust, you can't even, I don't even open my windows anymore. So it would be a win-win-win situation since I only have 40 seconds left to make a point you can never make in two minutes, by the way. What a joke. If you, if you took four months, at least a year, any of you on this board and told, said down in midtown that you can't use your leaf blowers but once a month, it would be great. Because everybody downtown in midtown knows, all they do is blow dust around for, from now until the leaves come down again. It's all they do is blow dust. And you guys have allowed this for like 20 to 30 years. It's amazing to me. So since I had, I had a, I had a much, I have all facts and how this works if you wanted sometime.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
And two minutes.
Thank you for your comments. Carly Brannan is our next speaker and then Andrew Bravansky.
I figured this was short, because two minutes is a crack.
Absolutely agree. Interesting that the public comment on matters not on the agenda was moved to after the council comment. There's like more moving around of stuff to try and like make sure that people leave and can't talk. And it keeps happening and I'm going to keep calling you out every time it happens because it's bullshit. Also interesting that Daryl had to excuse himself again. This is the second of the third week, of the three weeks that we've been here, but he's.
He's done it a ton of times.
Yeah, he's done it a ton of times. He doesn't like to hear from us. I'm just going to read the list of demands tonight because I'm tired. Demand number one, we demand a moratorium on all military equipment purchases. Our police are able to kill us with their bare hands. Look, look at Sharona, Sharona Stingley is his name, right? And that was Sacramento sheriff, but they killed him with their bare hands. So we don't need military equipment for these guys. We demand that city council approve all Sacramento Community Police Review Commission recommendations on military equipment use and agendize their stuff, y'all.
Can you actually meet with them?
Yeah, can you, can you actually meet with them? One of our council members here this evening talked about things that she has put onto the log that has not made it to the agenda yet either. So it's clear that you're wanting to silence the police commission. You're, it's clear that you're wanting to silence women of color. Knock it off. Number three, we demand a data transparency ordinance for Sacramento City. This is around a traffic enforcement dashboard so the public may easily know who SacPD stops, when, where, why, and what outcome resulted. Demand number four, we demand an end to SacPD's use of pretextual traffic stops. Number five, we demand an end to SacPD's use of unmarked cars and playing with clothed police officers. Number six, we demand SacPD dissolve its gang enforcement and problem-oriented policing teams. Number seven, we demand a moratorium on all homeless sweeps by SacPD.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Andy Bravansky, then Woman Christina. Is Andy Bravansky here? Woman Christina, I believe she's left. Nikayla Smith is online, we have eight callers online.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
I just want to go back to dispensary again. It would be nice to put up a health food store. We don't have that in South Sacramento. And I want to say this dispensary is right next to Herman Leinbach, is right next to Casumus River College, and it is right next to Valley High School. And there's a lot of children who walk this route down Mac Road, Bruceville, in order to get home and they're going to see this dispensary. And I think that sets a bad image for our community and for the children who walk in this direction. The children in my apartment next to, next to Bruceville and just the shops around here. I understand that people do not live in my community, so they don't really see it. Or they see it as profit over people. And I think people, our mental health, our wellbeing, and others rehabilitation should definitely come first, other than the dispensary being there in our community. Because it is a gateway drug. I know I'm passionate about this, but I've been through it and I've lived it. And that's why I would not like this dispensary in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jared. Following Jared is Barry Boyd.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, my name is Jared, I live in District 5. I'm here to voice opposition to the city's sweeps of homeless encampments. Particularly, I want to talk about the camp that was on T Street between 29th and 30th Street. I want to focus on the sweep because I was witness to it. It's just one sweep of many in Sacramento. And I want to note that code enforcement, forensic clean, and SacPD were there on their best behavior because the community was watching. Other sweeps have been worse. So at first, there was a cleanup of the camp on January 14th. People were able to keep their tents and belongings they needed. Unfortunately, one person's tent was taken while he was away. He lost his wallet and phone and was left with nothing, no idea or anything. His sadness was palpable. Then on 17th of February, the city removed all campers on the north side of the street and moved them to the south side of the street. Shoot, I'm going to have to skip ahead here. Basically, everyone was swept on the south side of the street on the next day. And they were saying that they're blocking accessible traffic and things like that. But the south side of that block on T Street has no ramps, no crosswalks leading to it. It's really an island. And so it's kind of BS that they were even considering that an issue. And tonight, I noticed like the city council used good judgment in noting that the addiction recovery center had sensitive businesses nearby and the dispensary wouldn't cause much of a difference. I wish that this judgment could be used to assess when an encampment isn't really causing much harm to the surrounding area and the sweep causes so much harm to the people living in that encampment. The pandemic showed us that the city can make changes. During the pandemic, the city supported businesses, opening outdoor dining. The city shut down streets for outdoor activities. My personal favorite, the city let homeless shelter in place instead of getting swept. I think there was a lawsuit that came to that. So yeah, the city can make differences. The city has shown us that it can change. And I really think that Sachomers are.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd and then Crystal Sanchez.
Good evening again. Since the caller from 2 calls back was allowed to speak on an item that was on the agenda, I will do the same. For any and all comments that were made by me this evening, was that as a resident? I was just pointing out the fact for full disclosure, I am on the city planning and design commission meeting. And for my comments made, all comments can be viewed and heard from that October planning and design commission meeting, which will take away any aspect of hearsay, hearsay. So again, with that, once planning and design commission meeting, what I stated is recorded. To this evening's, or my comments in regards to not on the agenda, I would like to urge members of the community to please apply for city and county boards and commissions. That, that way you will be allowed to hear all of the conversations firsthand and to vote unbiasedly on the agenda item brought before you. So you in fact will have beyond the two minutes to try to squeeze in what it is that, point that you want to make. And to that, to those that are in the gallery during city council meetings, please be respectful of the rules and procedures of the city council. So when a meeting is going on, to not be disruptive and abide by those rules. We are in fact still in a democracy, so let's all abide by the procedures of that democracy. Those of us who continue to be irritated by those who will not follow the procedures is upsetting. So just follow the procedures. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Crystal Sanchez.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Sanchez. I'm coming today as a concerned community member. I have 20 years' experience in the medical field, a degree in criminal justice, two years of psychology, with 73 certifications in mental health. My day job is working in behavioral health in the county and the rest of my time is spent working in this community. I come here today to talk about the seriousness of the mental health status of our community. In 2020, I walked across the street with the mayor as he was going to a soccer game. He told me his passion and priority is mental health. I've studied the work from Steinberg Institute to Mental Health Act to City Planning. In this research, I have learned one thing, that is that we can raise a lot of money, but we will never be able to thrive in a community as long as policies continue to traumatize this community, community's mental health. We continue to create policies that militarize us, that displace us. They force day-to-day trauma and create PTSD and death. Sweeps are happening three times a day. We continue to police our issues with no resolution. During COVID, we proved that a community could work together and bring access. We are back to the status quo, we are going backwards again. The status of Sacramento is we are in a mental health emergency that will get worse if we aren't heard. We need non-militarized solutions like verbal judo, community engagement trainings. And we need to stop traumatizing people through policies that create trauma. And we also need to create some trauma-free zones here in Sacramento. I would like a meeting to further discuss this. The time is now to match the continued talk to real-time action that is truly needed in this community. Stop militarizing us, stop buying the equipment, stop sweeping our people off the streets. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Decarcerate Sacramento.
Good afternoon, or good evening, council. My name is Mackenzie Wilson. I think I'll get to it in a second, but I really love all of this talk about how shitty two minutes is. I'm going to just pick off, pick up from where I left off last time about how we would rather work to, with our community to build housing, healing, education, gardens, access to choice and opportunity and more. And that most of us are actually really out here doing that work, only ever stagnated by your city policy and your interest in economic development instead of community development. And your inability to hear when you're wrong is always in the way. Everything that's been named, even the issues that happened today in the council where like these folks. Could you imagine if these folks had only two minutes to come in and talk to you about their entire lives? This woman who's spending hundreds of thousands of dollars doing everything you tell her to? It's so nuts out here. And so until you like know, like all of this and that you know that how you run this shit is wrong, I mean, can acknowledge it, we'll never get to how we make sure that the harms stop. So as always, do better. The demands that were given earlier, you know, no more purchases of military equipment, yo. Approve all of the police review commission recommendations, end sweeps and save money by eliminating SacPD's involvement, then use that money to build public housing shelter and offer much-needed services. Create an unarmed civilian traffic model and remove SacPD's traffic, SacPD from traffic enforcement and save that money and maybe give us some free fucking parking. Create a SacPD transparency dashboard, who, about who SacPD has interactions with and why and attracts its use of force. Invest in black and brown communities all around Sacramento. Invest in youth, education and violence prevention, violence prevention programs so that we can dissolve gang units and pop teams and build housing in our community. And last but not least, expand public comment time. Two minutes is a fucking joke. Who would even be able to think that they could participate in their democracy if they?
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Michael Snell, then call in user two.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I just wanted to echo the comments of the previous speakers in regards to, you know, budgetary spending in support of the police department and the other issues that tonight actually should brought up. By the way, my name is Mike Snell. I'm an equity, I'm a core member and opening a dispensary at 81 2536 Avenue. I will be the first black-owned and veteran-operated and publicly advertises black-owned in comparison to other dispensaries that were, that was opened by a core member who's supposed to be black, that black-owned, but it's not advertised. So that brings things into question. But going forward, this should have brought to light some of the issues and I appreciate the focus and, and the substance of the conversation and discussion and the, 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 the growing support for Core. And I appreciate that through the council, through the council, the city clerk and everyone that spoke up in support of Core and making sure Core is being put first. But we have to, we have to, going forward, focus permanent budgets on the technical assistance and everything because this is where it fell short. And we had this, we spent all this quality time on an issue that could have been resolved if budget was managed properly to ensuring the proper resources and tech support for core equity entrepreneurs that need that assistance with land acquisition, I mean, property acquisition and so forth. I'm still waiting, after going through tremendous head bumps and trauma myself with getting my location approved. I've, I've obtained my state license and it's been three weeks since passing all my building, my building inspections to get on the planning's calendar for my final walkthrough so I can obtain my certificate of occupancy. We have to do more for Core, guys, and we have to continue to grow the support. I appreciate what I saw tonight, but that focus needs to be on how we can continue to grow the infrastructure for Core. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is, call in user two. Mr. Davis.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis of To The Bay and Back Cheesecakes. And I won't spend but any, but a few seconds on this. We're going to find out this year who is responsible for enforcing the, the stated agenda. For the last three weeks, I've witnessed the mayor and vice mayor ask the city manager, does he have a report? And he just says no as though he's not responsible. So we're going to find out, starting with the city attorney, what is that about? Because a person cannot just deny something that's on the agenda that takes a process. As a person who's had several negative encounters in that department, I want that to be held accountable. Now, the other thing I wanted to mention is that in spite of all of the negative experiences we've had, I'm challenging the mayor, city councilman Laloe, and the rest of the city council who has eaten our cheesecakes. I'm notifying you now that the millennials during the Super Bowl, and I'm a baby boomer, and they taught me how to go word of mouth during the Super Bowl. And we just landed a major contract in the Bay Area. And this is in spite of all of the barriers we've encountered. So shout out to the Davis family, the Del Paso Heights community, and shout out to the Bay Area. And I hope the people I just mentioned will contact me. My phone should be ringing off the hook, Mr. Laloe. We were based in District 2. Mayor, we love you out there in Grant Pace Land. Okay? And so shout out to the millennials because it's not easy running a business. Somehow, we made it happen.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our final speaker is Richard Wake.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Yeah, Richard Wake, City Council, District 7. I would like to just echo a little bit of what Carly Brannan said about silencing comments. You know, it's not only during the public, the time pushing back the public comments, people are also being silenced on Facebook pages of the city council, at least one city council member. Now, I'm not going to mention who's doing that right now, but I have brought this issue up with Councilmember Jennings staff, with Mayor Protem Vang, Mayor Protem Vang staff, and also with the mayor's staff at the town hall, city council, at the town hall meeting in Oak Park on Saturday. I'd like to remind the city council that a few years ago, former Sheriff Scott Jones lost a. that a few years ago, former Sheriff Scott Jones lost a lawsuit to two members of Black Lives Matter, and was forced to reopen his sheriff Facebook page to public comments. You know, y'all got elected to the City Council, and tonight was an example of a lively discussion where differing viewpoints were allowed. Let me just say this, it's against the law, I'm going to say it again, it's against the law to block somebody from your council member Facebook page and silencing the public just because you don't like that person or disagree with what they're saying. Okay? I'm going to pursue this to the bitter end, all right? I am not going to be silenced. I'm going to leave it up to the mayor's staff, and to the Mayor Pro Tem staff, and to Councilmember Jennings staff to get this resolved. But I'm going to take this as far as I can go. You cannot silence people just because you don't like them, or you don't like them because they have a differing viewpoint. It's against the law, you can't do it, okay? So let's get this resolved without any further ado. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, no more speakers.
Thank you very much. I do want to remind members of the public about the Benefit Concert for Turkey in Syria. That's Wednesday, the 22nd, 7:30 at the Memorial Auditorium. Thank you again, everyone, for a good council meeting. We're adjourned at 9:14 p.m.